Good evening and welcome to the April 23, 2018 work session of the Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we are going to take a deep dive into the budget and leading us in this will be Tony Tommasello. Tony, the first item we have on our, on this agenda is introductions. I didn't know if you wanted to go around, how do you want to handle that?
I think people can introduce themselves when they come up.
When they come up, okay. Well, then, because of the nature, the in-depth nature of this endeavor, traditionally, we take comments from the public first at this work session and then dive into the budget. I don't see any members of the public, but I will make the call anyway. If perhaps somebody wants to say something that they wouldn't otherwise say. Does anybody, would anyone like to make any comments before we begin?
It was a beautiful day today.
Well done, okay. That said, then I will just hand it over to Tony and let him take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few minutes of introduction. Of course, you see a number of people here tonight. Some of them are presenters and some of them are staff that are here to support answering any questions. Hopefully, we can get to all of your questions tonight. Some of them, we might have to get back to you, depending on how far you drill down, as you say. We'll be using generally the same format that we've used in other years on the operating budget, which is, has a different look this year, but it is still effectively the same. You'll get a department introduction, a percentage increase in the overall department or decrease. That'll be followed by the individual objects. And we'll lead up each of those with a percent change, up or down as well. And then we'll focus on the significant changes in each of the objects within the budget. For those watching on television, there is a little bit of a difference between the packet and the published budget book. We will be using the packet pages, so you will not be affected. But if someone had just pulled up the draft budget online right now, the pages are off by three. So if you're looking at, we're looking at page, we'll start on page 63. They'll be looking at, if we're looking at page 66, they'll be looking at page 63. That is the nature of the cella. It's very precise and we added a three-page agenda before the packet.
Thank you for that clarification.
After that, as we discussed at the retreat, the CIP does have quite a different look this year. And Dennis will be going through the highlights of the CIP after the operating budget. So unless there's questions about process, we'll just go ahead and get started.
No, we're grateful to have everybody here tonight and look forward to it. Go right ahead.
So we start with CMO, which consists of seven divisions. The City Manager's Office aggregate budget is up 5.2% overall. The first three divisions are actually covered by City Attorney Board.
Good evening. I will cover the first three activities. The first is 1101, which is Mayor and Council Services. It starts on page 68 of the Agenda Packet. There is an increase of 16.3%, which is primarily due to the salary and benefit increase for the Mayor and Council. That'll go into effect July 1st. Other than that, there are no significant changes in this account. Questions?
No, go right ahead.
All right.
We'll stop. Our rule is if we have a question, just shout it out. Otherwise, you guys keep going.
Okay. The next account is 1111, which is Legal Services, begins on page 73. There is an increase of 19.3% in this account. And that is due to the addition of one position, which would be a paralegal two-position, which is designed to facilitate the contracting portion of the city's procurement process. Other than that, there are no significant changes to that account. The last one for me this evening is 1122, Registration and Elections, begins at page 78. There is a 96.2% decrease in this account because obviously, we do not have an election in fiscal year 19. So there are significant changes in printing and binding, postage and rental and usage. We do retain a small amount of money, about $2,000, or not about, exactly $2,000, in that budget, so we can promote the election and voter registration in the off-election years.
Great.
And that's it for me. Unless there are questions.
Thank you, Lynn.
Okay.
We're off to a great start.
We are. Office of the City Manager, 1131, is up 17.5%.
What page is that?
That is Packet Page 80.
Okay.
There are two significant changes. The first being IT Consultant Services increased by $24,390. That is actually an initiative that we are working on. We're kind of testing out an open data platform and we're working with a company called My Sidewalk. We are working with them currently in this year to develop some model dashboards that we could link our webpage to that would illustrate progress made on certain strategic directions and certain data about the city. We are, we will make a decision about signing backup to kind of go live with My Sidewalk next year, and that will be the funding required to do that. We have actually not made that decision yet, as we kind of work through the process and see if that is actually the right vendor for us. The other is a transfer, where we have the Neighborhood Grant Program, which has traditionally been in Neighborhood Services, has been transferred to CMO. $60,000 increase because it's actually managed by Monica Marquina, the Legislative Affairs Manager. And that's all for CMO. Next is Economic Development.
You can come up there. Tom's not here.
Kim just did the exact thing she was afraid she was gonna do this morning when she was describing her fear about this presentation.
It's not a big deal. Tom's not here.
What page are we on, Tony?
Economic Development, which would start at Packet Page 86. Tom apologizes he is not here this evening, but I can certainly cover for him. The Economic Development Budget is in fact down 11.9%. That is a decrease all attributable to a decrease in the Economic Development Activities Budget, which is a toolbox. The Toolbox Funding is sufficient to carry it for several years, probably. So we decided to decrease that this year. Any questions on that? On Packet Page 90, we have Environmental Services. That budget is up 5.4% and there are no significant changes within that budget.
The budget going up 5% is due to just?
Mostly attributable to wages. The overall wage increase was 3.7%. And then there's some smaller increases in there, but none of them rose to the level of $5,000. And then the seventh category is Housing and Community Development. That is also down 11%. That's Packet Page 94. We are decreasing IT Services because we bought a software package for grants management last year. We won't need to buy that again this year, just some maintenance. Miscellaneous Professional Services went up almost the same amount, $5,000, to increase because HUD's reporting requirements have gone up and the prices, frankly, of the consultant who writes them have gone up. And then the, which we just described, Contributions. This is where Neighborhood Matching Funding was, and that's been transferred into 1131. So there was a decrease here of $54,000 and actually, an increase in CMO of, I believe, $60,000. So we will be expanding that program a little bit.
Tony, when you were talking about the second item, the Miscellaneous Professional Services for reporting to HUD, that doesn't include the other program that we started with reporting on FHA or FHFA?
FHA Recertification.
Does it? That's a separate?
I do not believe so, but we have a lease that can definitively.
That particular FHA consulting is under the Special Housing Fund. This is, this additional, these are admin costs for the CDBT program that are reimbursed by HUD.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions about CMO? And we can move to Human Resources.
All right.
You think that's?
One more.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. The Human Resources Budget information starts on Page 98. Human Resources is Activity 1135 and the overall increase for FY 2019 is 11.1%. And there are four significant changes. The first significant change is in the out-of-pocket deductible reimbursement account, Object Code 514-700. FY 19 will be the third year in the row that employees and their dependents may complete a preventative care exam in order to be reimbursed for their medical plan deductible. Now that employees are more comfortable with this approach, we are seeing an increase in the amount of reimbursement requests being submitted by employees resulting in the need to increase the fund to more accurately reflect the employee usage. Funding for the deductible reimbursements for all benefit-eligible city employees is in the HR account. Second significant change is in Information Technology, Object Code 531,000, which increased $24,988, in part as a result of increased processing fees charged by our HR Information and Payroll System Provider. This account also reflects the increase in maintenance costs following the addition of the Performance Evaluation Platform to our existing HR Management Software that automates recruitment, hiring, onboard and offboarding. The city realizes significant savings and streamlines the entire process by utilizing the same software provider for the HR Management Functions. The third significant change is in Advertising, Object Code 541,000. With the retirement of 14 full-time employees, by the end of the fiscal year, we have budgeted some additional funding for advertising in FY 2019 to fill these vacancies. While most advertising of job opportunities is done through the city website, we occasionally advertise positions on job-specific webpages that charge a fee. Recruiting qualified applicants to fill our job vacancies is one of our top priorities and we continue to explore options to meet this challenge. We have requested increased funding earmarked to promote targeted positions on Indeed, the most visited online job site, allowing these jobs to be the first that people see on Indeed after the internet search. This will help us reach more talent and bring more visitors to the city job board. On average, more than 60% of our applicants indicate that they learned about a city of Gaithersburg job opportunity through Indeed. The last significant change is in Awards and Presentations, Object Code 542,000, which increased $10,500. Funds in this account are used to recognize and appreciate the excellent work of all city employees throughout the year. The additional funding is requested due to a slight increase in the number of employees who will be recognized for reaching milestone years of service during FY 2019. But the increase is primarily because we have experienced an increase in employee participation in our annual appreciation events, which include the picnic and the recognition luncheon. And that's all I have.
I just want to compliment everybody on the pie chart on Page 100. That shows 100% of Human Resources funding going to Human Resources.
Best pie chart in the top.
I wanted to say, having an increase in the number of people reaching milestone years of service is a good thing. It speaks well of how we treat our employees and how loyal they are to the city as well. So I want to recognize those individuals who have achieved those milestones.
I had a question. I was at a meeting last week with one of the representatives of Legit, who made a passing comment to me about, and this may be unofficial or, I hope it's not something that I'm not supposed to make public yet, but he said that you can expect a good reimbursement this coming year as well. So I don't know if you all know anything about that yet?
You seen Tony snap to attention there?
But that's what he said to me. I don't know if it was accurate, but.
How they would know that this far in advance, I'm not really sure, but we're flexible on that point.
Okay. If they want to give us money, we'll take it. Okay, I wasn't sure if staff had heard anything to that effect yet.
We have not.
Okay.
Kim, thank you. I just wanted to make a note to our, to the Boy Scouts and to the family that just walked in. You guys walked into, I'm assuming to observe for, as Boy Scouts often do, to observe government in action. And tonight, we're taking a real deep dive into our budget, which is to say that there are, basically, any other meeting you see will be more exciting than this one. But this is very important to what we do. So thank you guys for coming.
Big doozy of a meeting.
Good evening. We're now moving on to the Department of Community and Public Relations. I believe that starts on Page 109 of your Packet. The Department of Community and Public Relations is comprised of Public Information, Cable Television, Community Services, and Homeless Services, those four divisions. And overall, the department is proposing an increase of just 1.5%. The First Division Public Information Office, 1212, starts on Page 113. As Kim mentioned, there are impacts from the retirement incentive that was given. And we are going to be seeing the retirement of two very long-term and very valuable staff members in PIO, one specializing in graphic design, the other one in graphic design and print production. And this is allowing us the opportunity to reorganize the department. We will be hiring a full-time graphic designer, but we're also looking at filling the second full-time position with an administrative staff member who's going to specialize in marketing support, something that's much needed in the division. Prior to the announcement of those retirements, we were also approved for an additional halftime position to start in December of 2018. So what we're looking at right now is advertising for the two full-time positions, waiting to see how they flush out before determining what that halftime position is going to be. Originally, the halftime position was going to be for the administrative support. But we can now take advantage of a full-time for that.
So speaking of your headcount, and I've probably said this for the last several years, I'd like to see this department with more people. I don't know if Tony's on board with that, but I think that getting the word out is something that you've heard from me more than once, that I'd like to see stronger in communication than what you have the ability to do with the staff that you have today. And I know we're scheduled to have a get-together to talk about strategy at some point. So this year, it may be too late for that, but I hope you're still thinking, and as we talk strategy, we focus on how to actually achieve what we want to achieve for the city.
Thank you. You'll see in some minor parts of the 1212 budget, there are some minor increases for supplies and equipment that would accommodate that new position, workstations and things like that. For IT Non-Consultant Services line item, that's decreased by about $11,700. That's primarily due to the reduction in the website content management system expenses after the initial contract that was spent in this year. The design for the website has been approved. We're finalizing the wireframe and the content migration should start soon. And we anticipate launching it in late summer. The new Economic Development website operates on the same platform and they will launch concurrently. And I also wanted to note that we're nearing the final determination of a vendor for our digital asset management system, which is funded in this current fiscal year. There are some funds in FY 19 for temporary staff to help us migrate and organize the thousands of photos that we're going to be putting into that new system. Hopefully, we can work smarter.
Can I ask what systems you're looking at or?
I would rather not say at this point, as we're still talking with them.
Okay.
The Miscellaneous Professional Services line item decreased by $17,300. There will be no biennial citizen survey this year, in this fiscal year. We did increase the allocation in this line item a little bit for freelance photography. Again, the need for compelling images just continues to grow as we expand our outreach. As Lynn mentioned, without having elections this year, there are decreases in several places. We have advertising decreased by 5,000 and postage decreased by 7,000 because those are election-related expenses. And then while it doesn't rise to the level of a significant change, I did want to note that there is funding in the miscellaneous line item to support the development of a citizen ambassador program to help with outreach, something we talked about during the retreat. And then we've also put a little bit of money in there for some preliminary communications ahead of Census 2020. Are there any questions in the PIO budget?
If I could make a comment on Neil's comment, Britta and I have discussed that and we are open to mid-year. Once she gets through realigning the department, I think she's looking to do some kind of higher-impact things with the new people. But if that is not sufficient, then we will look at a mid-year add.
Great, thank you.
Okay, for the cable television, it starts on Page 118. There's only one significant change in the television budget. We are entering into a contract with a vendor to assist us with the policy development and training for the drone program. The $6,000 test preparation and training costs for two pilots, which we plan to do over the summer, is budgeted in conferences and class registration in FY 19. As we get closer to actually deploying the drone, we will conduct a very public campaign to ensure that our residents are aware of what we will be doing and probably, more importantly, what we will not be doing with that drone. Are there any questions about the cable TV budget? Okay, on to Community Services, it's 1215. That's on Page 122. Program activities increased by $11,300. Our teachers asked for additional support for ethics education initiatives, so we're actually planning character counts assemblies in 14 elementary schools this year. To enhance our financial wellness program, we've budgeted $3,000 to help bring a nationally-known speaker to a symposium in Gaithersburg. The balance of that person's fee would be offset by our bank on Gaithersburg Partners. There's a decrease in the furniture and fixtures expenditures by about $6,000. We have modular furniture budgeted for and will be purchased in the next couple of months. And then our IT Non-Consultant Services decreased by just over $9,000. In FY 18, we implemented a new automated grant portal and the expenses are going to be significantly less in subsequent years. We're actually still in the midst of grant application reviews at this point and our recommendations from the Community Advisory Committee and Educational Enrichment Committee will come before you in June. We do want to thank you for approving this expense in FY 18. It is proving to be very helpful in streamlining the application process for our nonprofits and schools and also for the reviewers. It's all now quite automated. Then the Contributions Budget increased by a total of $20,150. This additional funding is primarily going to be used to support youth initiatives. So we're looking to increase funding for the Borra Parent Resource Center at Gaithersburg Elementary School. Then in FY 19, we're allowing nonprofit school-based grants to be available for programs that operate in elementary and middle schools. Previously, they were only available to our high schools. We're also slightly expanding the scopes of services in the Housing Preservation and Transportation Grant and also the Financial Fitness Grant.
Thank you.
Hearing no questions, I'll move along. Homeless Services is the last one. It's on Page 128. With the loss of HUD funding prior to the FY 18 budget, we were asked to explore operational budget cuts. Within the Professional, Miscellaneous Professional line item, in FY 18, we decreased by about a third the amount that we set aside for a contract to guarantee placements for inpatient treatment from our street outreach efforts. Successful completion of inpatient treatment is a requisite for eventual placement at Wells and for many other programs for those in recovery. Unfortunately, with the reduction in that contract, we were unable to actually secure a contract for that amount, so we're operating without one. We will not be spending the money in the current fiscal year and we've eliminated it completely from the FY 19 proposed budget. That's a reduction of about $14,000. I think because of longstanding relationships with inpatient treatment providers and because of healthcare insurance options, Jimmy and his street outreach team have been able to secure placements for most of those in need without having that contract in place. And this reduction has not really impacted the occupancy at Wells. We did add funds within the Miscellaneous Professional Services Budget to cover regular bedbug monitoring. Fun topic. We are using the services of a canine who's appropriately named Sherlock. And every couple of months, he comes in to detect the presence of bedbugs before we have an infestation. We have other protocols that have been put in place to help keep bedbugs from getting in as well.
That's cool. A bedbug-detecting dog.
He is. Named Sherlock. And while we are no longer receiving federal funding for the Wells program, our staff continues to look for grant opportunities. We've expanded a contractual arrangement that we have with Montgomery County to provide case management for residents living in permanent supportive housing in Gaithersburg. That's increasing that contract from about $19,500 to, it can go up to as much as $30,000, depending on the number of clients we take on. And additionally, we're increasing our occupancy revenue by about $4,000 this year. The clients that are being admitted to Wells and those transitioning over to DeSalem are increasingly able to work. And those efforts in the, our efforts in the area of vocational training are paying good dividends and helping them get employed. So we're seeing an increase in their ability to pay the occupancy fees. And then as we discussed at the retreat back in February, an annual report of homeless service activities and outcome measures is going to be prepared at the end of this current fiscal year. And then very soon, we're also going to be launching a bimonthly homeless services newsletter. So you'll have a new e-newsletter that we can use to help tell the story of the important work that's being done by the city in the area of homeless assistance. I hear no questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Britta.
Good evening. I'm Stephanie Walker. I am representing the Finance Department and that begins on Page 134 of the Agenda Packet. This department is made up of three activities, the Finance Administration, General Services, and Non-Departmental, and in total, increased 4.5%. The Finance and Administration activity represents expenditures related to the operation of the Finance Department. And the budget line items for this can be found beginning on Page 138. This activity increased 3.6%. And the only significant change was related to the software maintenance account, which increased due to the purchase of new budget software. I would like to, at this point, pass along a huge, huge thank you to JJ, our Budget Analyst, who is here tonight, for all of the work that he did during our implementation and project management, along with an even bigger thank you to all of the budget staff throughout the city and all of the different departments who gave up their time, not just during the regular budget process, which is time-consuming enough, but during the off-season in order to help us design the system, go to training and provide feedback. And I know it's probably a bigger lift than they necessarily wanted to, but I really appreciate it. And we would not be where we are with it without all of their help and the little complaining, at least within my earshot. So I appreciate all of it.
Thank you.
The second activity is the General Services, and that begins on Page 143. This activity decreased by 0.1% or $78 and had no significant changes. The last activity within the department is actually the Non-Departmental activity, and that begins on Page 145. This had an overall increase of 4.5% relating specifically to five significant changes. The first is our Miscellaneous Professional Services Account. This account is primarily made up of the city's contract for speed camera services. And the budget for this decreased because that contract is a fixed-fee decreasing contract. It expires in FY 21, so we can look forward to decreasing expenditures in that line over the next two years. The next account, Tax Abatement Account, increased by approximately $45,000 due to a new abatement agreement that came online this past year. The transfers to our Capital Project Fund decreased by $391,200. This transfer amount fluctuates annually depending on our funding needs for our capital projects, where we are as far as pre-funding them, as well as where we are for our spending. The transfer to our Asset Replacement Fund increased by $180,785. We began budgeting for the Asset Replacement Fund in FY 17. The amount of this transfer is really based on updating an asset inventory list of over 3,000 different assets from a number of different departments. The increase in this transfer is due to changes in how we're estimating some of the replacement costs, as well as an additional $125,000 in funding for city vehicles as part of a catch-up provision due to some underfunding in prior years. The last significant change relates to our transfer to our other post-employment benefit trust, and that increased by $700,000 as part of a multi-year plan to bring the city closer to our fully funding our actuarial cost for this obligation.
Health insurance. I mean.
Retiree health.
Yeah, well, it's not, no, I know, I know, OPAP is retiree health insurance, but it's just consistently, it's an item that always, it goes up from year to year. For current employees and for retired employees, it's going up. That's what's happening.
It's happening everywhere, all over the place. There's all kinds of public.
If you get enough in the trust, it's supposed to just throw off enough earnings to pay your expenses. That's going to take a long time to do.
We have yet to hit that theoretical.
Yeah.
Well, we're doing better than most municipalities in this.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm not saying we're doing badly. I'm just saying, health insurance is just a huge challenge for everybody.
And we haven't borrowed from it either. That's the.
Were you going to say something?
I just, I may have missed this, you may have said it, but in the Non-Departmental, the second item was the $31,000 increase because the county has started charging us a lot more for providing tax billing services.
Yes, you're right, good point.
And I just, you know, I wanted to make sure we mentioned that for the benefit of the public, that they know that the county which they pay taxes to is basically charging the city which they pay taxes to.
An artificial charge.
A lot more money, basically, to take care of the piece of paper that they get once a year.
That they were going to print out anyway.
That the county was going to print out anyway, to tell them what their property tax bill is, so...
Well, this is the second year in a row with a pretty significant increase in this line item. Are we going to see that again? So my question was about this, is there an expectation for yet another large increase in the next year?
It is. We've been told that next year, they plan to increase it probably another 15% or so. Unfortunately, they indicated that they did cost study of what it costs to build, to prepare the tax bills and send it out. Now, my assumption is that it doesn't cost them that much more to add one extra, excuse me, two extra lines on it for us, but I mean, I do understand there are some costs to the program. It's still more cost-effective to have them do it at this high of a fee than it would be for us to do it in-house, having worked for jurisdictions that do local tax collection at the municipal level. It's a very time-intensive process. And you end up having numerous staff on hand because you have to be available to take payments on a very regular basis, especially with multiple payments. So it's, we're sort of stuck because it is not something that you really would want to bring in-house because the last thing we want to do is send residents two tax bills, right, one from the county and one from the city. That would probably not go over well. But yes, they did increase their costs about $30,000 from this year to last. I believe in 2017, we were paying roughly $30,000 total, and it's now up to $228,000. So it's a fairly significant over-two-year increase.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you for pointing that out, Councilor.
So with respect to OPEB costs year-over-year, what are we looking forward to, to reach full funding as we move forward?
Well, it's a mixed bag. So we are required, under accounting standards, to do an actuarial evaluation every two years. And so this was the second year of it, so this upcoming, probably the next three to six months, we'll be getting a new valuation. And so they'll look at the new medical trends and they'll look at the new future investment trends and they'll recalculate the liability and they'll give us a different number to target for. So it's a little bit of a moving target because if interest rates go up by half a percent, your liability can change by several million and your annual cost can change by several hundred thousand. We have proposed to change the benefits for new employees moving forward and that should help reduce our costs in future years, bring it down. With our last actuarial evaluation, the annual OPEB expense was 4.3 million. So we're funding 2.9 to the trust, so there is a gap there. But if you look at it as a pay-as-you-go standpoint, meaning only paying the amount out that the trust is expected to pay out in a given year, that's closer to about $600,000. And so we are still adding assets to the trust above and beyond what is expected to be paid out on an annual basis, which is good. We want to make sure that we don't hit a spike where it's, we have a, you know, a large wave where suddenly that flips and, you know, we're paying out four and a half million and we're only contributing 6 million, or 600,000.
That's why we're increasing our budget for plaques and awards.
So I mean, I think we're in a good place with it. We're moving, you know, the contribution, you know, up incrementally each year. And then we're also reviewing the benefit levels for future employees and doing a new valuation every other year to see where the trends fall on a longer basis.
The current actuarial target, which is already dated, since we're going to have another one, was 50, 55?
A million?
Yeah.
I think it was 51 million.
51 million. And we have 15, something like that, which is 15 more than most towns have at this point. But we're, if we're spending $600,000 or $700,000 a year and putting in 2.9, you know, we're catching up. So eventually, hopefully, we will catch up. And when you combine that with the reduction in benefits for new employees, specifically spouses of new employees.
So why would we need $50 million in the bank for this fund?
Accounting standards.
The fund is supposed to throw off enough earnings to pay the benefit. When most towns just use pay-as-you-go to pay the benefit, but much like the GASB requirements that you maintain infrastructure, now you have to have a dedicated trust to pay for post-employment benefits.
Paying it only out of earnings seems pretty extreme.
And our benefit is fairly limited compared to counties and states.
So the liability really represents, if you think of it as, you know, someone has a 20-year service life in employment, right, until they retire. And you're in year 10. The liability really represents the first 10 years that you were employed by the city and how much you should have set aside in each one of those years in order to, the day that they retire, you have a fund fully available to them to draw down and pay for their healthcare for the future. So it's not really a timing on when the payment's going to be used, it's a timing of how the employee earns it and a reflection of the fact that, you know, our employees are all at different service lives and places in that cycle. So from that standpoint, it's a liability because it's attributable to past service life of the employees. The funness of accounting, right?
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Welcome, Pete.
Good evening. Peter Cottrell, representing the Information Technology Department. Excuse me. The Information Technology budget begins on page 150. And the IT department consists of two activities. 1145 is Information Technology and 1146 is Geographic Information Systems, more commonly known as GIS. As an aggregate, the IT budget is up 2.2% for FY19. IT 1145 budget is up 3% and the budget for 1146, GIS, is down 2.5% for FY19. Proposed FY19 budget for Information Technology reflects the sustainment of an expanding and increasingly technical infrastructure with incremental increases for software services and for software and hardware maintenance. There are three significant changes for 1145, Information Technology in the proposed budget. 531,000 Information Technology services increased by $6,378, largely due to annual costs associated with the move to a hosted service for the city's internet website and for costs for a proposed mobile device management solution. 531,600 software maintenance agreements increased by $8,715 due to incremental annual increases for various software packages, as well as for increased costs for new security software and for increased data backup capacity. 573,000 repair and maintenance for machinery and equipment increased by $27,500 due to the need to purchase ongoing hardware maintenance for the city's core network storage systems. These initial three-year maintenance agreements will expire early FY19.
All right, can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
We knew that was coming, right? So first of all, if I'm reading this right, in your consulting services, where you increased by $6,700 and including a mobile device management solution, is that what is saving us $15,000 at the Parks and Rec Department because they don't need a mobile technology of their own?
No, that is not. The two are unrelated. The Parks and Rec has had a dedicated mobile application for their special events and they've made the determination to not pay for that. Mobile device management solution is a piece of software that will help us manage mobile devices in terms of putting software releases onto them and maintaining the consistency of the devices.
Okay, thank you. More, a deeper question on the need for core disk storage units. Can you describe what that is all about? Is that something that you're doing storage in the cloud or is this your backup system?
This is our core storage system for the city. This houses all of our user files. It's also the central server that provides all the disk space for our virtualized server environment. There's two units, there's one here and there's a replicated unit over at the Public Works Facility. And the virtual server environment we have runs off those and is able to, you know, if one unit goes down, automatically switch over to maintain the continuity of services.
So is there any thought of taking this out to the cloud at some point?
There is not at the current time. Going to the cloud will certainly increase, you know, the network traffic we have. It'll probably end up costing more, we believe.
Really? Because, I mean, cloud costs are coming down, have come down very dramatically over time.
Well, I think it depends on how you look at it. I mean, there's storage costs, but there's, can also be transactional costs associated with them.
It's fine, I'll trust that you've done the homework on that. I was just a little surprised to see that we were still doing it on-premise. All right, thanks.
And as I mentioned, this system's been in place for three years, so in the future, we might look at something, but at this point, we have an on-premise solution.
So are the IT systems protected from these, what seems to be random and increasing ransomware attacks and hacks of various institutional systems?
We believe they are. We certainly put a lot of attention into maintaining the security of the systems. One of the items I mentioned in the software maintenance agreements was increased costs for new security software. Those are a couple of software modules that live on our firewall for advanced malware protection and advanced threat protection. So we have software that's looking out for that sort of thing and intercepting a lot of that traffic.
So the replicated or the duplicated image that we have on two different storage sites, they're separated enough so that one, if one gets, if one of those sites gets hacked, then the other one is going to be free from that, protected from that hack?
We believe so.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, each case that happens, you'd have to look at it in visual to figure out what the threat vector is and what attack you're facing. But, you know, replication is certainly there as a mitigation towards any sort of malware.
Guess we'll just have to wait and see.
Well, as I say, we put a lot of time and effort into maintaining the security of the systems and hope we're not tested too much.
Yeah.
Let's hope.
Okay.
Go ahead, Pete.
Okay. The primary focuses of the GIS division includes the support and data development for the Water Quality Protection Program, including ongoing improvements to the parcel boundary and impervious cover data sets, and in providing information to the public via maps and a growing number of web-based applications and services. There's one significant change listed for the 1146 GIS activity. 531,500 software licenses decreased by $20,900 after a one-time purchase of additional GIS software licenses in FY18. That's all I had. Any changes? Any other questions?
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
And welcome, Michelle.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Potter, the Director of Parks Recreation and Culture. The department budget begins on page 166 and encompasses 20 accounts, 1411 through 1438. Our budget looks a little different than the others. A staff completes program budgets for each program and event, then they roll up into the department budget. Overall, the department is proposed to increase by 2.9% in FY18. Parks Recreation and Administration begins on page 175 and is up 16.8%. The department successfully transitioned to Active Net, our new recreation management software system, in January. The project team will be evaluating and implementing additional features and capabilities in the near future. There are four significant changes. Accounting and audit increased $20,000 to reflect anticipated credit card processing and transaction fees. 51% or an average of 11,000 of our registrations occur online annually. Software maintenance agreements decreased $7,135 due to the migration of our new recreation management system. ADA decreased $5,000 to reflect trends in actual expenditures. Vehicle and equipment increased $25,000 for the purchase of a new truck to transport facility and program equipment. Recreation Programs and Sports begins on page 182 and is down 1.4%. General Operating Supplies decreased $12,270 to reflect the reduction in the cost of sports apparel. Staff conducted an internal inventory of equipment and supplementary purchases are not necessary in some areas. Our top three sports for participation include basketball, followed by youth and teen soccer and volleyball. And we're also experiencing increased interest in tennis lessons, just so you know. Recreation Classes starts on page 204 and is down 2.5%. Program Activities decreased $7,000 because the dance recital is held every other year. Participant costumes will not need to be budgeted in FY18. This year's recital will be held on June 2nd at the Auditorium at Gaithersburg High School at 7:00 PM. Noteworthy is that we have over 4,000 people enrolled in our recreation classes, of which 73% are city residents. Youth Services budget begins on page 208 and is up 5.4%. There are no significant changes in this activity. Programs include the City Participation in Montgomery County Soccer for Change Program that provides a safe and productive out-of-school time activity for vulnerable youth while reinforcing values of accountability, respect, teamwork, and trust. It also supports our after-school programs that serve students from five elementary schools, October through May, and trips on non-instructional days throughout the school year. Summer Camps budget begins on page 214 and is up 7.2%.
Can I, Michelle, can I just interrupt you and go back to the Youth Services?
Sure.
I'm just looking at, on the line items, what's the sort of more significant expenditures to account for the 5.4% increase? It looks like most of it is wages. I see a line item for program activities for $4,000.
Right, it's our part-time salaries increased close to $16,000 due to the minimum wage impact.
That's what I was suspecting, and I just wanted to ask you about that.
Correct. And at the very end, I'll let you know what our total department minimum wage impact was.
Sure.
So Summer Camps, this is also another one. It's up 7.2% and our minimum wage impact is close to $37,000, so you'll know that. Rental and use decreased $5,000 to reflect expenditure trends for the use of Montgomery County Public School buses to transport city camp participants. And this year, we have a seven-week program compared to a prior six-week camp session based on the new MCPS calendar. So we did modify our programs. The Youth Center at Robertson Park budget is located on page 219 and is up 7.2% also. There are no significant changes in this activity and participants from the center include students from Ridgeview and Lakeland's Middle Schools. And this facility had nearly 11,000 membership scans in FY17 and the youth volunteered nearly 1,100 hours of community service. The Skate Park budget is located on page 223 and is up 10.8%. There are no significant changes in this activity. In FY17, we had approximately 3,200 visits and 130 participants in our lessons. Our department began working with economic development on a feasibility study for the site. Casey Community Center begins on page 223 and is up 2.7%. There are no significant changes in this activity. Staff is planning for expanded programming in FY19 to include family game and movie nights and seasonal-themed events. With renovations to this facility, we saw an increase of 140 bookings in FY17 over FY16.
140 net increase?
Correct.
Wow, that's pretty... Wow, that's pretty good.
With the renovations to the kitchen and all of that.
Great.
Great.
Waterpark budget begins on page two thirty-three and is up ten percent. Furniture and equipment increased twenty-five thousand dollars to support replacing the aging emergency announcement system. The current public address system is the original equipment installed when the facility opened twenty-eight years ago. This attraction averages close to eighty thousand patrons annually from Memorial Day through Labor Day. Arts Barn starts on page two forty and is up one-point-four percent. There are no significant changes in this activity. Ticketfly, our online ticket service continues to be very successful. We currently have more than thirty-five hundred subscribers who have purchased tickets for one or more performances. We are now exploring the use of Ticketfly, which was recently bought out by Eventbrite, for other events and facilities. And the percentage of available tickets sold for the Arts Barns shows is seventy-five percent, which is excellent compared to the industry standard of sixty-five percent. The Old Town Youth Center budget is located on page two forty-six and is up a half a percent. There are no significant changes. The center, which serves students from Gaithersburg and Forest Oak Middle Schools, had record attendance in FY seventeen with nearly twenty thousand membership scans and the youth volunteered over twelve hundred hours of community service. The Benjamin Gaither Center.
Can I ask you about uh, the Old Town Youth Center? I mean, here you've got um, you know, another facility that we staff where the increase is not so significant despite the overall impact of minimum wage increases. What's the reason for that? Is that just because we, we have vacancies or what's going on there?
So um, the part-time salaries increased about thirty-five hundred dollars. And um, then we also had a thirty-five hundred dollar minimum wage impact.
It's mostly staff by full-timers, I guess.
Right.
Correct.
They're not at minimum wage.
And they're not at minimum wage.
Correct.
So they don't, okay, got it.
Okay. Benjamin Gaither Center is located on page two fifty and is down two-point-eight percent. Instructor services decreased by five thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars to reflect actual expenditures. This facility continues to thrive, serving our seniors. Annually, we averaged approximately thirty thousand five hundred membership scans, transport an average of forty-eight hundred seniors to and from the center and served nearly eight thousand lunches. And our fitness class participation continues to increase and we had over twelve thousand four hundred people taking classes at that center.
Are those numbers up significantly over the previous year?
It is, everything is increasing um, from, over FY sixteen um, across the board.
It's good that we invested in that facility.
The Activity Center budget begins on page two fifty-six and is up two-point-four percent. There are no significant changes. The Activity Center continues to be a popular venue for a variety of multicultural sporting and community events. It is scheduled to be an early voting center for the Guber National Primary Elections in June and the general elections in October. And the Aquatic Center budget is located on page two sixty and is down point-two percent. There are no significant changes in this activity. Swim lessons, swim classes and water exercise programs remain very popular and staff continues to offer lifeguard classes throughout the year. These classes serve not only the public, but are a great recruitment tool for the city for us to recruit staff. Miniature Golf Course budget is located on page two sixty-five and is down eleven-point-five percent. There are no significant changes and we are looking forward to kicking off the two thousand and eighteen season next Saturday on May fifth.
How is it that the budget came down so much?
The part-time salary is decreased for a little, close to five thousand dollars due to actuals and a vacancy credit. Okay, Picnic Pavilions budget is located on page two sixty-nine and is down point-two percent. There are no significant changes. Weekend time slots at Bore Parker feeling fast, then May Pavilions are at seventy-five percent capacity and we expect the weekends to be completely booked by June first.
I love the picnic pavilions. They are, there's, it's such an easy element for us to maintain and yet they just, people just use them and rent them out and rent them out. They're just great.
Well, it's because.
With little expense.
Yeah.
It's because we have such nice park facilities that they want to.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Michelle.
Winter Lights budget begins on page two seventy-one and is down fifteen-point-eight percent. Miscellaneous Professional Services is decreasing forty-seven thousand two hundred dollars due to electrical infrastructure upgrades that will occur in FY eighteen. These improvements will facilitate better set, better display setup resulting in a reduction in the work hours of DPW.
That's pretty significant savings.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay, Special Events budget is located on page two seventy-five and is up one-point-seven percent. This account supports our four signature events, Summer Fest, Oktoberfest, the Winter Lights Festival, and the Book Festival, which is coming up quickly on May nineteenth, in addition to all of our one hundred and twenty community events. We are pleased that we have nearly two thousand hours of volunteer hours to support our efforts. There are two significant changes. Software maintenance agreements decreased fourteen thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars as we're eliminated, eliminating the mobile app and migrating this customer service to the city's new website. So that's what you were asking about earlier. And Miscellaneous Professional Services is increasing seven thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars to set aside funding for the commemoration of the tenth annual Gaithersburg Book Festival.
So there'll no longer be an events mobile app?
Correct, because it's, the, the city's new website will have a, will operate like the mobile app did where we'll be able to um, update real-time information um, for bands and um, food vendors and different things like that that the mobile app did. The Museum budget begins on page two eighty-five and is up nine-point-eight percent. There are no significant changes. Staff is developing programs and events for the newly renovated Old Town Plaza. In addition, we look forward to working on the soon-to-be reconfigured Rolling Stock. The new plaza will be utilized during Heritage Days in June and staff is planning a STEM activity related to water in July. Staff is working with local businesses and a representative from the Maryland State Wineries is scheduling a visit to see if the site could be used for a wine tasting event.
Is the, is the, again, the um, the nine-point-eight percent so the slightly higher side, is that also again because of minimum wage or something else?
Part-time salaries decreased.
I see health insurance, I see full-time wages.
Fourteen thirty-seven. So um, health insurance. Thank you, so it's on the personnel side?
Got it, okay, thank you.
Michelle, can I ask a question on page two seventy-eight? It talks about sponsorship coordinator, uh, line item cost twenty-nine-eight-seventy. I don't necessarily answer now, but if you could follow up with the rate of return on that, are we seeing significant sponsorship revenue coming in for that or?
We are. So um, the, the last report that we had, I actually have a handout for that. So our FY seventeen year-end report was um, we had sixty-six thousand dollars in cash sponsorships and fifty thousand dollars in in-kind sponsorships, so that.
There's probably actually more in-kind that's just not reported anymore. But I did, following up on Rob's question, um, I heard that our sponsorship coordinator is not gonna be there for long. Like she's, she's moving across the country.
Correct.
So I'm assuming that we're gonna find somebody else to fill this role.
We're going into discussions with the city manager shortly to discuss what our options are.
I think there's more opportunity than, than, I think there's opportunity to grow what that coordinator brings in.
The court, the, the effort will continue.
Yeah.
Depending on whether it's this part-timer or whether it, this part-time job could be combined with other part-time jobs that would take it over. But at the end of the day, the effort will continue.
Okay.
Okay, and finally, the Kentlands Mansion budget is located on page two eighty-nine and is up three-point-eight percent. There are no significant changes. The mansion hosted a hundred and fifty-four events in FY seventeen and we're looking forward to the completion of the new side garden this spring. Staff will be programming it with events such as yappy hours, concerts and more, as well as renting out this space as a venue. So overall, again, the department is up two-point-nine percent. The FY nineteen minimum wage impact of eleven dollars and fifty cents to twelve dollars and twenty-five cents for our department is projected to be fifty-two thousand and eighty-five dollars. Staff has forecasted additional three hundred and thirty-five dollars, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars in revenue for FY nineteen to offset this impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, welcome, Kevin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm uh, sitting in for Director Schulitzing tonight, who is attending the American Planning Association Conference in New Orleans. Um, the Planning and Code budget begins on page two ninety-four. The Planning Department is comprised of five divisions, including Administration, Planning, Permits and Inspections, Neighborhood Services and Animal Control. The FY nineteen proposed departmental uh, budget is up four-point-six percent from FY eighteen. Moving on to the activities, in um, activity eleven ninety-two, which is Administration, on page two ninety-nine. Uh, it, Administration is up four-point-one percent with a slight increase in part-time hours to adequately, adequately staff the front counter at City Hall. On page three oh-four, it's activity eleven ninety-four, which is Planning. Planning is up two-point-five percent with two significant changes. One is the decrease of twenty thousand dollars in engineering and architecture consulting fees as we were encouraged to remove funding for these services and provide them in-house instead. Uh, the other increase is in, the other is an increase in our travel budget of six thousand four hundred and fifty dollars to allow for more staff to attend professional conferences. On page three oh-nine, uh, it's activity eleven ninety-six, which is Permits and Inspections. It is up two-point-three percent with two significant changes. One is a decrease of thirty-four thousand in vehicles, since we won't be purchasing one in FY nineteen as we did in FY eighteen. Uh, the other is an increase of nine thousand three hundred and ten dollars in conference registrations for added certification requirements. And then on page three fourteen, it's activity eleven ninety-seven, which is Neighborhood Services. It is up fifteen-point-nine percent with one significant change, an increase of thirty thousand dollars in vehicles for the anticipated addition of one full-time code administration officer that will help with our serve, to help serve our growing city. Um, on page three nineteen, activity eleven ninety-eight, Animal Control is down three-point-one percent.
What's the reason for that reduction? I mean, it's.
Um, it was, it contributed to um, the retirement of senior staff.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Makes sense.
That's what I thought it might be.
Yeah.
Thanks for verifying that.
That all you got, Kevin?
That's it.
Alright.
Alright.
Sure, quick and easy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, police.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Mark Swarker, Chief of Police. The Police Department budget begins on page three hundred and twenty-four and the significant changes begin on page three hundred and twenty-five. The first significant change is under account Police Weapons. This decreased by thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. This is a result of not having to purchase ammunition in FY nineteen. We previously purchased two years' worth of ammunition due to delays in deliveries and ammunition shortages. However, we currently have a sufficient supply of ammunition and we won't be making any purchases uh, in FY nineteen. Under account Software Licenses, the increase of sixty-two hundred dollars is primarily due to the purchase of additional software for our file and queue system, which will assist us in tracking quarter master supplies. Also, that increase is due in part at least for seven hundred dollars for the software licenses for the two new cadet positions. The third item, under account Software Maintenance Agreements. This decreased by fourteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars as a result of elimination of three software maintenance agreements that are no longer needed. The crime analyst identified software um, that better meets our needs and making the previous software obsolete. Under account Miscellaneous Professional Services, the increase of nine thousand eight hundred and eight dollars is primarily due to the promotional process consultant fee to a minister, the corporal and sergeant promotional process in FY nineteen. Under account Conference Seminar and Class Registration, this increased by nine thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars is primarily due to ten thousand being budgeted for new officer academy entry-level training. Under account Police Forfeiture Expenditures, um, there was an increase of five thousand dollars due, due to a projected use uh, of police forfeiture funds of ten thousand dollars based on prior, the prior year uh, usage. The, under account Primary, uh, under the count Repair and Maintenance Machinery and Equipment, this decreased by seventeen thou- seventeen thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars uh, due to the mobile data computer maintenance funds um, decreasing by fourteen thousand in elimination of the in-car wireless maintenance uh, funding. Under account Vehicles and Motor Vehicle Equipment, uh, this decreased by nineteen thousand five hundred because in FY eighteen, we purchased a second parking enforcement vehicle. We will not be purchasing any parking enforcement vehicles in FY nineteen. On page three hundred and twenty-six, in the chart labeled Police Department Budget Summary, under the column FY nineteen Proposed Budget, it shows that personnel costs are eight million six hundred and eighty-five thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars, or ninety-two-point-two percent of the department's uh, budget, with operating expenses totaling, totaling seven hundred and thirty-four thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars, or seven-point-eight percent of the department's budget, which equates to the proposed budget of nine million four hundred and twenty thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars. The total proposed budget in FY nineteen is a two hundred and ten, ten thousand three hundred and eighty-nine dollar increase compared to the FY eighteen adopted budget.
How did we save almost five percent on operating?
We went through each um, line item budget, a big part of that, um, and we reduced costs where we could. But the big reduction happened, had to do with the ammunition that we didn't have to purchase.
Alright.
Question about uh, the line item for Police Forfeiture Expenditures.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Chief, you said that the, there was an increase of five thousand due to projected uh, use of funds of ten thousand?
Yes.
Uh, based on last year's expenditures, historical data. This isn't the actual money that comes in from forfeitures, right? This is the budgeted amount used to handle forfeitures and process them?
This is the, it's in our um, forfeiture account. The, the money is initially seized.
Okay.
We go through forfeiture proceedings and then that's turned over to the city and remains in a separate account from the general fund in a forfeiture account.
Yeah, so it's an account that rolls over from year to year and you.
It does.
Budget how much you think you're gonna need from it each year?
Based on prior year's usage.
Got it, okay. And um, can it just be used to supplement any expenses of the department? Or is, does it have to be used for specific purposes?
It has to be used for official police purposes and what I use that account for is um, unanticipated expenses that arise that are not budgeted in our general fund. Uh, for example, we um, some of the money we bought in FY eighteen so far, this is as of April thirteenth, we were budgeted uh, five thousand dollars and as of April thirteenth, we spent eight thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars for a new kennel, for the new K-nine dog. We didn't know we were gonna have to retire the dog as early as we did, so that was unanticipated.
Right.
So we bought that, the kennel. We used the money for de-escalation uh, training. We paid for a consultant to look at our use of force review of our policy and make recommendations uh, to, to our policy to change. Um, and it's also, there's fees associated with filing for the forfeiture uh, proceedings. Uh, the advertisements in the newspaper, sheriff's office sort of paperwork, so there's other fees we draw from that account.
Yeah, that's what I was alluding to earlier, is that portion of it, but I wasn't sure how much that eats up of the amount. But all of those purposes that you listed are very good and noble purposes. I'm glad to see us spending money on those things. Um, do you, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Chief. Do you happen to know off the top of your head um, how much money is in that forfeiture account overall?
Eighty-six thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars.
I guess you do know. Thank you very much.
So Chief, you've got a rather precise number for the part-time personnel. What does that represent?
The part-time, we have um, seven uh, part-time, that's our police service aides. We have seven part-time, that's our police service aides, parking enforcement officer, front desk staff or police service aides that are there, serve there for...
The new, two new cadets.
And the two new cadet positions. Each cadet position is about $21,000 per person, and they're going to be a part-time capacity.
I just want to comment, I'm glad to see your investment in training. I think that's probably one of the most important activities that your department conducts. I think when we see problems throughout the country, it often reflects the fact that many departments don't spend, don't invest as much time and attention to training in all aspects of police work. And I think in particular, the de-escalation training and the training that orients your officers to dealing with individuals who might have mental health issues, developmental disabilities, et cetera, is very important. It shows that we have a caring department, but also that our, your major objective is to keep the community safe without harming anybody, including those people who might be causing problems for the community.
Yeah. In every police citizen encounter, we strive to resolve it peacefully without having to use force. However, in some situations, force is essential to accomplish law enforcement objectives. However, we want to do it in such a way that we're using the minimal amount of force necessary to overcome the resistance offered, being offered, the resistance being offered to the officer in an effort for the officer not to get hurt, but also not to hurt the citizen.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Mike Johnson, Director of Public Works, representing the Public Works Department. Public Works is comprised of four divisions, and the department continues to use a data-centered basis to track and improve asset condition, as well as our service delivery. For FY19, the department's overall budget will increase by 7.7%. The department is comprised of 30 activities. The budget begins on page 338 of your packet, with significant changes beginning on page Starting with the significant changes, 1150 Facilities Management, that begins on page 526000 Machinery and Equipment increased on an increase of $15,600. That's for a vehicle with a radio and light bar as part of our fleet enhancement. Engineering and Architecture, that saw a decrease of $7,500. And the reason for that is that the parking lot assessments will be tied to our overall pavement management activity, so it's not needed in this particular object. Miscellaneous Professional Services increased by $17,600. This is for two follow visits for Maintenance Connection, which is our CMMS system that we recently acquired for the Facilities Division. Each visit entails a five-day rotation for the contractor. Contract Maintenance Services, that saw an increase of $22,646. A number of new contracts have been added, which include roofing inspections, overhead door work, fire extinguisher replacements, and switchgear testing, which is for our generators, part of the overall safety enhancement in our facilities. Conference Seminar and Class Registrations increased by $6,085, and that's to account for the requested additional FTE training. We have a great commitment to keeping our staff trained. The work that they do is increasingly complex and regulatory in nature, and this is a solid investment to keep staff, you know, on the cutting edge. Gasoline expense increased by $6,125. The actuals from fiscal year 17 were almost $10,000, so it's based on taking a look at the historical expenditures and trying to harmonize the cost. Buildings and Facilities increased by $306,500. And for these, we have additional service contracts for painting, carpet, flooring, maintenance of, general maintenance of building equipments and roofing. R&amp;M Machinery and Equipment increased by $55,000, and that account increased as the budget for several small pieces of equipment removed from the CIP into the operating budget. Machinery and Equipment, this is attached to the new hire for a new bulk fuel trailer for filling generators. The staff person would be responsible for keeping the generators topped up and ready in the event of, that they're needed. Vehicles, motor equipment, I'm sorry, I covered that. The next item is 1151, Buildings and Grounds City Hall, and that begins on page 356. Electric saw a reduction of $10,000, and that's just a rebalancing based on historical usage. 1153, Buildings and Grounds Public Service Facility, and that's really the Public Works facility, begins on page 360. Solid Waste and Recycling saw an increase of $95, 96, $9,596, and that's an increase in service based on the demand of the facility and the lack of space to provide additional containers, other than carts. Buildings and Facilities, that's saw a decrease of $10,000, and that's again a rebalancing of R&amp;M funds based on historical usage and expenditure of money. 1158, Kentland's Mansion, begins on page 364, and that saw an increase of $5,781. The Contract Maintenance Services, that increased due to three new contracts for window washing at the second and third story windows. Water treatment was typically, was previously paid out of the R&amp;M line. R&amp;M Buildings and Facilities saw a decrease of $15,000, and that's, last year we had, last fiscal year, we had a project to re-point the chimney. That was removed, so it was a one-time expense, so that accounts for that change. 1160, the KC Community Center, begins on page 368, and water saw an increase of $5,800. Additional water is, is being used due to the kitchen dishwasher being used more after renovation, and that's sort of what Michelle alluded to with increased programming of that space, programming use of that space. The R&amp;M Buildings and Facilities, that project, last year we did an LED upgrade for interior and parking lot lights that's no longer needed, so that's been reduced by that amount. 1161, Buildings and Grounds Old Town Pavilion, that begins on page 370. Buildings and Facilities saw a decrease of $8,000. Last year, an LED project was completed on the bandstand, and, you know, that's, that's, the cost has just been brought down to what it's more likely to be this year, minus that special project. 1162, Buildings and Grounds Public Safety Facility, that begins on page 372. Electric saw an increase of $12,000. The two-year average has shown, showed that this figure was under-budgeted, so it's just a, you know, a correction to bring us in line with likely expenditures, what we feel are more likely expenditures. R&amp;M Buildings and Facilities, again, they're based on two-year average, the building ma, of the building maintenance, the building may want to go major renovation, and R&amp;M costs are expected to go down by the $5,000. 1164, Buildings and Grounds Gethersburg Aquatic Center, beginning on page 374. The Contract Maintenance Services increased by $15,039, and that's due to increase of money to support the pool maintenance service contracts. R&amp;M Buildings and Facilities, again, a reduction of $6,200, and that's a removal of the one-time LED light upgrade that was performed in fiscal year 18.
Michael, can you elaborate a little bit on that first line item under 1164? Why the increase is 25,000? It says that it's to support aquatics. Does, I don't know, is that, is that programming, or is that something else?
It's the, not, not programming, it's service contracts for the pool. The approach that is being taken is to allow the facility manager, who is a PMP, he has gone through the PMP training, to sort of take some more ownership of any of the projects that are going on at this facility.
Okay.
So we're using service contracts to do that.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. 1165, the Activity Center, begins on page 376. The water charge is increased by $8,500. No water was budgeted in FY18, but looking back in 17, approximately $8,600 was used, so we feel that's, you know, probably a reasonable cost, an accurate cost, a projection of what it will cost us. R&amp;M Building and Facilities, a removal of one-time project costs to replace water heaters, and that causes a reduction of $16,000. 1166, Buildings and Grounds Gethersburg Arts Barn, that begins on page 378. And the R&amp;M Buildings and Facilities, again, a removal of a one-time project for LED replacements, resulting in a $6,000 reduction over fiscal year 18.
It's nice to see that we've been installing LEDs in all these facilities.
Yes. It's part of the strategic direction, as well as our commitment to greening the city, reducing our carbon footprint.
One day, we'll have it on streetlights, too.
Maybe.
Wonderful.
To Pepco's ears.
Well, it's saving us money, too, right?
Yeah, saving money, too.
1167, Buildings and Grounds Water Park, that begins on page 380. And the Contract Maintenance Services, the increase was $21,563. And again, that's a part of the effort that was mentioned before, where we're having staff at the facilities sort of take a bit more ownership of several of their service contracts. Water, that's a rebalancing of utility costs based on actual usage, and that results in a $5,000 reduction over fiscal year 18. Solid Waste and Recycling, a reduction of $66,75, and the new contract price resulted in lower costs than fiscal year 18 pricing. R&amp;M Building and Facilities, a reduction of $35,000. In fiscal year 18, two big projects were done. The office window was replaced, as well as hot weeder, hot water heater was replaced, and that's not only done in 19, so that accounts for the change. 1172, Robertson Youth Park Center, beginning on page 389. R&amp;M Buildings and Facilities saw an increase of $10,000. The one-time project request to replace all interior doors and frames that are warping and causing a lot of maintenance effort on the part of our staff. So we're going to replace them, and that should result in an overall reduction in cost.
Is that an issue that's just localized to this facility for whatever reason?
It appears to be localized to this facility. It's not, it's not across all the facilities.
Okay.
And we're not really sure why it occurred. It might have been something to do during the construction phase where...
Were these, the materials used to make the doors and frames, or the, was that all recycled materials?
It might have something to do with that, because it was a very lead, one of the first lead type of projects that were done. And, you know, over time, with those types of materials, time tells you whether it's a, it's a good item to use or reuse, continue to reuse.
So in replacing those, we're still going to use such materials that fit with the character and the intent of the building, right?
No, you'll go to the...
Or go back to metal doors.
You'll go back to metal doors, so.
Okay.
Back to the tried and true metal door.
As long as we don't lose our lead rating, I think that's the key, right?
It's already expired.
1173, Gethersburg CPSC Park Site, beginning on page 391. Electric cost reduced by $5,000, and that's again a balancing of utility costs based on actual usage. 1175, the parking facility, the all-time parking facility, beginning on page 393. Contract cleaning increased by $11,082. This facility has very heavy wear and tear, and this is an effort to increase the daily cleaning from four hours to six hours per day for the, five days a week. A lot of the stairwells are misappropriated, and, you know, this would help us to sort of, you know...
Diplomatic.
Keep a more helpful environment in the facility. R&amp;M Buildings and Facilities, the one-time project was, was removed, and that's reduced, a reduction of $25,000. 1312 Streets and Special Projects, beginning on page 400. Vehicles and motor equipment, a reduction of $7,300. In fiscal year 18, a new trailer and sidewalk grinder was purchased for the Streets Division, and that, that's just not reflected in 19, so that's the reduction. 1341 Landscaping and Forestry. Vehicles and motor equipment increased by $55,500, and that's for the purchase of a three-quarter ton pickup with plow and salter. This unit would help to transport landscaping crews as part of our future planning for plumbing of Crown, which will, which Street, those streets will be coming on, online soon.
So, Michael, on this category, there was a pretty significant jump in wages in personnel services, in full-time employee wages. Is that attributable to minimum wage issues, or is there something else going on?
It's attributable to an FTE that was requested. As we are taking on Crown, we have to plan for additional bodies to, to deal with landscaping.
Okay.
And plumbing.
When, when does our responsibility to the streets in the Crown development kick in?
We don't have a date yet. It's predicated on the developers turning us, turning, we have a protocol for turning a street over.
Right.
And when they, when they're satisfied, that we would then accept the street.
So none of the streets in Crown, public streets in Crown have been turned over?
Not yet.
They're not, they're not public yet, technically?
They're not public yet.
Yeah.
1342, City Stormwater, beginning on page 412. A Contract Maintenance Services, a reduction of $45,000. The sand, the sand filter at the Public Works Yard, which is part of our industrial permit, and filters water from the yard before it is discharged to the surface water body, has experienced corrosion of the conveyance pipe, the exit pipe. Now, this, this is a fairly common problem with the type of material that was used historically when those were built, is the corrugated metal pipe. They tend to lose the bottom of the section, and it's not just peculiar to the sand filter. We, we've also experienced it on Rabbit Road and on several other sites where we've had to put a concrete jacket around the base to prevent the pipe from spreading. And it's largely due, I was speaking with one of our consultants today about that, and he's, he sees it a lot, and he was telling me that as the water conveys the dirt, it kind of strips the galvanizing coat off. It's sort of like an abrasive at high speed, and then the salty water comes behind and sort of sits on the steel, and you get sort of accelerated corrosion. So it's a problem that the CMP pipes tend to have. So the, this here was felt to be better as a CIP project, not an operations project, and we would replace the pipe with a reinforced concrete pipe replacement, which has a much longer life and is more durable. 1343, Nesville Park Maintenance, beginning on page 414. General Operating Supplies increased by $23,400, and that's for additional safety surfacing at city playgrounds, and that's really a safety enhancement. As Charles Reed goes to the park... As Charles Reed goes to the park conferences, the, he's, he's kept abreast of the safety standards for playing, playing fields, and he's just incorporating them into ours.
What, what, what kinds of materials are they talking about when they say safety surfacing?
It's like a wood carpet type of, like a spongy carpet. So the G-force when kids jump in it is not as, as, you know, delivers to their bodies.
Got it, thanks.
Vehicle motor equipment, a reduction of a one-time purchase for a ball field machine and bat wing mower. And that reduced in a reduction, that resulted in a reduction of thirty-eight thousand dollars. Mowing and Bulk Pickup, beginning on page four nineteen. Contract Maintenance Services, there's an increase for new mowing RFB requests for bids. And the thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars or four hundred dollars will be used for contract leaf collection. You know, as we, depending on the season, how wet it is, you, you sometimes get more leaves. And this sort of helps our crews to stay on, you know, complete what they have to do. Vehicles, Motor Equipment, a reduction of a one-time cost for the boom, a boom truck and crew cab pickup. That purchase was made in eighteen, it won't be made in nineteen. That, so that results in a reduction of a hundred and six thousand fifty-four dollars. Recycling, thirteen forty-five, Recycling, beginning on page four...
Mike, can I just throw in a reminder here? I think relative to Bulk Pickup, within the coming year, we'll probably be coming to you with some, just some concepts, proposals, whatever you call that, to modify the Bulk Pickup program to be a little bit more random and a little more efficient. We're not sure what those things might be, but just as a reminder, that'll, that'll be part of this year's work plan.
Great.
That is one of our most popular services, actually.
They're a very popular service, and it's popular with a lot of non-residents, too, unfortunately. So that's, that's the thing we really want.
That's the downside.
Okay, thirteen forty-five, Recycling, beginning on page four twenty-three. That was, saw an increase of forty-one thousand five hundred dollars. And that's based on the increase in the contract price based on a CPIU adjustment of two point one percent to the rate. Thirteen fifty-one, Engineering Services, beginning on page four twenty-five. Engineering and Architecture saw a reduction of five thousand dollars. The inspection cost of the pedestrian bridge at Blum Park budget, which has been performed in fiscal year eighteen, is removed. Won't be needed in nineteen. And the vehicle and motor equipment, a vehicle was purchased for our new right-of-way inspector position, which was added in fiscal year eighteen. We have no additional expenses associated with vehicle purchases for nineteen.
So, Michael, again, in this category, there's a pretty significant jump in full-time wages. Is that due to additional FTEs or...?
That's an additional FTE. We, we proposed to hire a project manager for the engineering, additional project manager for Engineering Services.
Does Crown Castle know we have a right-of-way inspector now?
I'm sure they'll find out, okay.
Thirteen ninety-three, Street Lighting, and that begins on page four twenty-nine. And Electric saw an increase of fifty thousand dollars. And that's just the usual CPIU escalation of electricity charges. R and M Machinery and Equipment, the contract has to be rebid. This contract, which is currently on the street, was last bid in two thousand and five. And based on recent expenditures or historical expenditures, we project that the likely expenditure will be about eighty thousand dollars for FY nineteen. So that results in an eight thousand dollar increase. Thirteen ninety-seven, Traffic Control, beginning on page four thirty-one. General Operating Supplies, and that increased by fourteen thousand dollars. And that's for a new sign and street name, blacks and thermoplastic and stop bars, thermoplastic for stop bars and postmarks. And those are the significant changes. Were there any questions on anything?
So, Mike, on thirteen forty-three, you've got a line item for goose abatement. How do we abate those gooses?
Goosees?
There's a dog, actually, that is used. He's not Sherlock.
Chases them off.
He's brought, he's a specialist in chasing the geese, sort of chasing them off. That's what it's used to.
We employ several interesting dogs. That's really nice.
It's a different one than for the vet.
Yes.
That's what he said. It's not, it's not, it's not sure.
They're very special as a...
It's Watson, Watson. I had a couple of questions. First, oh, I'm sorry.
He wasn't quite done.
You finish, go ahead, please.
Thank you. A few weeks ago, MCPS made the news for having lead appear in the water testing for a few of the facilities there. Do we test for lead in our facilities? And if not, do you recommend that we do?
Mike and I discussed that just last week, and we contracted with a consultant to look at our outlets in all city facilities. Not based on any, any complaint or any suspicion, but since MCPS has buildings that are contemporary to our buildings, we thought it was just the right thing to do. So that'll be done this fiscal year.
Okay.
It's good to establish a baseline that allows us to do that.
Was that all you had, Rock? Did you have more or no?
Yeah.
Stay focused.
There's no more geese.
Sorry. Gooses. I just wanted to quickly follow up on the two asks I had last year. One was for looking at our processes for improvements, particularly in the green methodology in which we do stuff. You'd mentioned the LED lighting replacement and the green commitments, so that's great. The other ask that I had was my support for training for our, particularly within your department, for folks to go out there and learn the latest and the newest in, you know, green methodologies as well. So I was wondering if, how that's going.
It's going quite well. The department has and does invest quite a bit in staff training, not only of the professional staff, but also our line staff. And the ultimate goal being that the regulations are complex and are changing. They're like, for instance, some of the newer ones, like green, green technologies, they're, they're evolving. So we encourage staff to go to conferences and, you know, people, folks from Stormwater, staff from Stormwater do go, as well as some of the other divisions attend those as well. And we, we have a real, very strong commitment to staff training throughout the entire length and breadth of the organization.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to emphasize it's an ongoing, ongoingly important to me. So to the extent that you will look at new innovations in the future, new methodologies, cost for those new methodologies, I'd be supportive of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Right.
I'm back.
All focused.
First, we didn't talk about this because I don't think this was a significant change in the budget, but how's it going with maintenance of the organic turf field at Lakeland's Park? Are we feeling that the process that we've got in place for doing the maintenance is sufficient? And I know it's an extremely popular field, and we're looking at some capital projects to install other, other fields, which we'll talk about in a minute. But I just wanted to get a sense, you know, regarding the maintenance issues, how that was going.
It's going well. Every, I think twice a year is it marked that you have to replace? Once a year, we replace the infill, the organic infill. And that's done by the vendor who really sort of, you know, warranties the field.
Right.
It is, as with items like this, the price of the organic infill is costlier than if we used a different, you know, material. But we don't really, we're not really experiencing significant maintenance issues. It's just, it's well understood and it's working well.
Good, okay. And then the other question I had was, I know that we have had some very preliminary discussions over the last couple of years and some experimental pilots on composting. I don't know if you've had any bigger picture discussions with Tony or, you know, within the department generally about what this might look like if down the road, the city decided to look into sort of a more serious, more comprehensive effort to do composting at the residential level. I realize that is kind of a transformational thing that we'd have to have a big discussion about. As I recall, one of the big challenges of the last couple of years, every time this was brought up, just in a kind of a, in a brainstorming session, was that the economics of it were tough because there just weren't a lot of places around here where you could bring the compostable material to if we were to have city staff or a city vendor collecting it from residences. And that we'd have to drive it pretty far, so to the point where it starts to not become economical anymore. And probably offset some of the environmental benefits if you're driving around many, many miles with a gasoline-powered truck to drop it off somewhere. So I don't know if you all have had any discussions about this, or if I'm just kind of ambushing you with this issue. But I know we've, we've done it at special events in a limited fashion for pilots. So I don't know, maybe that's a question for Michelle. But what I'm really asking more along lines of is, you know, more of a Public Works-type, broader potential approach to it, if it's something that the mayor and council decide we want to look into going down the road.
We've been meeting with Diane.
Okay, great.
And we're looking at offering composting at our farmers' markets. We're not able to go and collect all residents' compost materials, but at least we'll offer two sites, Thursdays in Old Town and Saturdays at the Kettlin's Farmers Markets, where Diane's gonna, we're working with her and trying to roll out some type of campaign where we're going to be able to offer the countertop compost bins and liners to so many people, however many she's able to obtain. And then we'll be able to collect items at the farmers' markets in addition to at our special events, so.
Okay, is that...
More information forthcoming.
Okay, something that we're thinking of rolling out this summer, or...?
Yes, yes, yes. We were trying to get it started by May, but it was a really tight timeframe for the start of the farmers' markets. But it's something we're working on.
Okay. And then I would, I would just ask that Public Works and city managers sort of keep it something on their radar screen for a possible future conversation in the years ahead as, as we see where this goes. Obviously, it will have serious budget implications as well. And it may be something we decide we don't want to do or can't do. But, you know, this is a great start, and we'll sort of see where it evolves.
Right, we hit a little bump in the road because the contractor who does our special event is so full that he's not able to take on the farmers' markets, so.
Right, shows that there's demand for this.
Correct.
Go ahead. So since we're on this green theme, I mentioned, I asked the question about the replacement of doors at the Robertson Park Youth Center. We talked, and I heard somebody said that the lead rating, that standard or certification had expired. And I was wondering why we wouldn't do something about maintaining that certification, since we made that investment originally. Is that the case, or...?
I believe the city code only requires that the buildings be built to lead silver standard. And there's no requirement to maintain it, to maintain the...
Well, it was never, that was, I don't believe that facility was actually lead silver. I think it was, it was lead certified, but it wasn't silver.
Was it silver?
But the question is, why would we make the investment and brag about it and then not maintain the certification that we have been bragging about?
This is a Tony question.
So this is why I've asked the...
Understood. And since lead is, is, you know, such a work in progress, we, our experience with it is that we paid for the original certification and that the annual recertifications cost a lot of money. And we would prefer to put it into vehicle, into building maintenance and in fixing the things that kind of didn't work out in lead buildings.
I agree with that.
That's the simple...
Well, I think it's, you know, we've, we've taken the strategic direction that we want to be a green city. And I think if we build something to, and with the expectation that it's going to continue to be, provide that, that level of service, you know, in a way it's symbolic, and, but I think...
It's a lot of money for symbolism.
Well, I don't know what the money is. I haven't been, we don't, so...
I, I don't know.
You know, so I guess it would be helpful to have the details of what that cost would be. You know, if it, if it truly is exorbitant, then yeah, we should, we should consider that. But I think we have to know what those costs are. We did make the investment. We've invested in a couple of buildings that way. And I think it's important to, to maintain that standard, just in the same spirit that we're talking about doing other things in a green way.
Are we talking about a name or standards? Has the actual...
We're not, I think...
Of the building decreased since it's not...
Right, when we talk about maintenance, we're talking about maintaining the, the use as it was designed and built.
Right.
Which was up to the standard.
Well, it was designed and built to be a green building. And if it's no longer a green building, I think we have to think about that.
It's no longer lead certified. We want to spray asbestos everywhere, or whatever the case be.
Well, there's more than that. I, I think it's something worth, worth discussing and finding out what the cost is.
Okay.
If we're going to make the investment in being green, in some aspects, why not be green the whole way? So as much as we can.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, Michael.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Let's dive into CIP.
Staff member two, who would like to leave at this point an opportunity?
Yeah, let me just say, let me, because I know we're going to have some department heads and division chiefs take off because maybe they don't have much at stake with CIP. And on behalf of the council, we're, we're very grateful for all the work that you've done. We didn't have a tremendous amount of questions tonight, but it's not because we're not looking deeply at this budget. It's because we really feel like you guys are capturing the policy and direction, directives that we've been giving, and it really jives with the direction we want to go. So we appreciate it. And with that said, Dennis, take it away.
Mayor and Council, as you know, the CIP budget has changed in terms of how the format has done. It's actually fairly parallel to what the Stormwater CIP has been for the last few years. But we have made a number of changes to the document and how we actually have structured the CIP. The CIP budget begins on page four forty-two and continues to four forty-six. In addition, there are a number of appendices related to this that have detailed project descriptions, and those start on five oh four. We discussed this a little bit at the staff, or the council retreat. We've taken the CIP funds, which were thirty project funds, and redistributed those into six separate actual funds, which have separate projects listed within them. And to kind of go over those new project funds, we have the General Capital Projects, which is really the designated fund where we put assets in terms of savings and also do expenditures related to new city assets that would be coming online that we currently don't have or are currently servicing. So when we build out new parks or new police stations, which are some of the projects that are listed under that particular CIP, that's where those are funded from in this particular category. The other aspect we use there is also contingency. Typically, we budget around five hundred to three hundred thousand a year for contingency projects. Those are ones that we may not be aware of, that come up through the year, that we fund through that particular contingency item. The second new fund is the Infrastructure Fund. And basically, that serves all the sidewalks, streets, bridges, and other special projects related to those. I will note that Stormwater is not part of that because it's its own fund. The next one would be Facilities, which encompasses all the city facilities that are not park facilities. So those would be City Hall, the Public Works Facility, some of the other minor facilities that we have in terms of Wells Robertson, et cetera, are also in that fund. And then the fourth fund is the Parks Fund, which includes all those facilities related to the parks. So that not only includes passive and active parks, but parks buildings related to their functions in terms of their activity. All those funds, we've set a thirty thousand dollar cap for projects within those. If it's under thirty thousand, those are budgeted in the operating budget. So that's a little bit of change. We used to have an account called ninety-eight dash one, which kind of served as this little clearinghouse for all these smaller projects. We've actually placed a large portion of that within the operating budget, and you saw that tonight. The other two remaining funds, the fifth one is actually the Technology Fund, which we use for new hardware or new software initiatives. Some of those include like facility cameras when we bring new facilities online, or as we upgrade facilities, we have installed cameras and also security measures in terms of access doors. In addition, like the police body camera came from that particular fund. It has a lower threshold just because of some of the expenditures within it, and it's set at fifteen thousand. I will note, too, that we typically, although we set aside funding in years four and five... I will note too that we typically, although we set aside funding in years four and five, we don't usually program those out just because of the way technology changes, it makes it difficult for us to do a full five-year plan on those, but we do set aside a certain balance to expense in the fourth and fifth years, and as we get closer to those, we detail those out and, and assign the projects to them. The final CIP fund is really the Art in Public Places, which deals with art projects, some which are developer funded and others which are actually related to city projects. We don't have a threshold for that because each of those projects is slightly different, and those are the six new funds, and so.
Dennis, may I jump in?
Sure, at any time.
Okay, thanks. So I'd like to point out, at the, at the last meeting of the mayor and council, it was requested by a member of the public who was also a member of the planning commission that we put in the budget some crosswalk improvements that had been recommended for Kettlin's, and I just want to point out that it's right here in the CIP budget, number 3303, $95,000 for next year. So this long away, I guess it's been a couple of years since we first started talking about this, so I'm glad to see this one going forward. Let's see, oh yes, I also wanted to say that I jumped for joy at seeing the Observatory Park project. I hadn't realized that there was some talk about that going forward because I had brought that up along with a couple of other folks a while back, but I'm really glad to see that there's a, there's some thought being given to possibly putting a telescope in our Observatory Park once again, and I think that would be wonderful.
I agree.
Yeah.
That would be really cool.
Would be really cool.
So one of the new features you'll see in the CIP is actually detailed project pages for each of the projects. Before, you know, they were somewhat worded in kind of paragraph form where you had a one sentence or actually three or four words, and then the amount that we were spending. We've actually developed project pages which give the project location, kind of a more general description, and then specifically tied revenues to that particular project, whether they come from city transfers in terms of the transfer from the operating budget, or they come from other special sources like POS money, public open space money, or other state grants. So that's a little bit different than we've done in the past. We are hoping to kind of incorporate additional features in the future, so for some of these, we actually might have maps or photographs related to the CIP projects. We're just trying to do this in kind of a piecemeal fashion, so we make sure we get all the pieces in place. And again, most of those are found in the appendix of the document, and those are on pages 500, starting on 500. So I thought I would go over the, the new projects, were actually listed in your packet starting on page 445. We've added new projects in the amount of about $4.2 million for those, and I'll go through them in terms of how we've outlined the actual CIP funds, so we do have the general capital projects. We've added one, two, one new project to that aspect, which was the mayor and city council chambers. We've had a lot of discussion about that, but it hasn't appeared in the CIP before, so this will be the first time it actually appears in the CIP. In addition, as Neil noted, we've added one to the infrastructure CIP, which was the Kettlin's Boulevard Crosswalk Project, which is something that we've been looking at trying to do for the last few years, but we finally incorporated that into the actual CIP. We've actually added four projects to the infrastructure CIP. The first one, and actually the first three really deal with kind of assessments. One of the things we've been trying to do with our CIP, because we're a pay-as-you-go city, is determine how much money should we be setting aside for general maintenance and ongoing maintenance of our facilities. And so we actually have two assessment facility, projects going on, one for the Activity Center, and then one for Casey Community Center. We have just or are about to complete Kettlin's Mansion, which you'll see a project that's relative to that assessment, and then also City Hall is being completed this year. The other one we're doing is a pavement assessment program for the city parking lots, similar to what we've done for the streets, but we're actually doing it for all our city parking lots. And then it's noted by Mike when he talked about the sand outfall replacement for the Public Works Facility, that is now incorporated into the CIP. We've actually added seven projects related to the Parks CIP. One of them would be the Community Museum HVAC and Storage Enclosure. We're incorporating this into the relocation of the bug car. This would be the time to do it, so we're looking at trying to provide maybe a little bit more storage, but also a little bit better screening of the HVAC units there at the museum complex. And then as Neil noted again, we're doing a study for Observatory Park to look at modifications and possible placement of an actual telescope at that facility. As I noted earlier, one of the outcomes of the Kettlin's Mansion study was to kind of prioritize and look at the various aspects that Park and Rec would like to see at that facility along with maintenance, and one of them was the permanent porch enclosure, so that has been included in the CIP. We will also be doing Diamond Farms Park Court Number Three, some lighting related to that, and that's kind of a little bit different than our other lighting projects, and we're looking at kind of pickleball courts at those particular facilities, which is a new activity that the Parks and Rec have been doing for the last couple of years.
Mayor thinks that's very important right now.
I know, something he'll be happy.
Especially the pickleball stuff.
Pickleball's really fun, just, just saying.
We have a trail replacement for Washingtonian Woods Park, which is approximately a mile long. This is probably the first replacement that we've done of that, of any major trail. We've done some minor improvements, but this will replace the entire trail path. We also have the Community Center Electronic Sign, similar to the one that's at Bora Park now. And then we have the gym partition replacement between the two gym facilities. And then finally, under the Arts in Public Places, we actually have added two new CIP's City Event Banners Project, which will allow us to do some banners in the 355 corridor, specializing on which city events that we have and activities related to that, similar to what we do when we have flags and other advertising events. And then we also have additional funding set aside for 16 South Summit, which is the new police station, of doing a public art project at that particular facility. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on the new projects, and then I was just going to touch base on a few existing projects that we have to kind of update you on those.
I just have one quick question, and Denise may have the answer, and maybe you have the answer, not Dennis, but Denise and I have been, and Tony have been talking about a potential project to do some sort of public art on the back of the brick wall on East Diamond, and perhaps incorporating some of the parking garage there, and I didn't know if that was going to be, if any part of that was going to be included in this budget, or if we're just waiting until next budget to look at that, or if something else is going on there.
No, that's actually currently in the CIP as an existing project, because we've been talking about it over the last year and a half or so. So that's the Old Town Art Project, which is project number 92.
Okay.
There's roughly.
I thought it was a new project, but I guess it's not.
Roughly about 500,000 for that particular project.
Okay.
So it's already budgeted.
All right, thank you, Dennis.
So, back to the, to our green and sustainable approach to doing things. We, you know, the, the path on Main Street that was, that the county finally installed, we had talked for a long time about using previous materials on that path, and apparently we couldn't do that because the county decided to, to do that, correct?
We installed that.
We installed that path?
The county did that.
But we didn't?
The county did that.
Okay.
Want to have previous pavement there, and also the grade was great enough that it was going to.
That it wasn't going to make any difference, okay, but so I guess I would.
And it would have been extremely expensive.
So, we're talking about the, yeah, so with the path replacement of Washingtonian Woods, there are potential there as well as, as our, as the infrastructure related to the city parking lot. Mike, I don't know if those are options, but I think we should always consider places where we might do this.
We will look at that.
As part of our Stormwater strategy.
And then also, I should note that the current pavement being proposed for Metamune Park is actually FlexiPave, which is porous pavement material. It's a little bit different than porous pavement, it's a little bit more flexible than that. So that's currently being proposed for Metamune Park for the entire trail system. So it would be kind of a first model, we want to do some testing of that. That would be the first place we would actually install it and then see how it's working, similar to what we do with the synthetic fields. You know, we do a project, we see how it works, and then we move forward if we think it's doing okay.
Yeah.
So Mike, that is on the agenda in terms of.
Good, I'm glad to hear that, because I think it has to be part of our overall Stormwater management strategy.
And then is, I should also note that it's kind of our project, but being funded by the state is the NIST path. On 124 will be a porous pavement project too. So we will have some new projects to look at and see how well they do.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions on new projects? In terms of some of the older projects I wanted to update you on, the Police Station project, which is on page 510 of the packet, I just wanted to let you know that we're currently looking at that project in terms of funding and budget that's coming forward. We have some new budget estimates that are coming back. To be honest, we're a little concerned about some of the things we're hearing from a construction standpoint, related to some of the tariffs and just the number of projects that are coming online within the general metropolitan area. So I just wanted to let you know that we're looking at alternatives for some of those projects to make sure that we come in on budget on that. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. That's a pretty significant project for us.
Definitely.
You know, we're currently at roughly 12 million for that particular project, and then we have the council chambers on, on top of that.
We also were looking, had been looking for a bond bill, right, for that project?
We have, but we were not able to secure a bond bill.
Right.
From either the Senate or the delegate side.
Right.
We have had a conversation today of looking at other alternatives with the governor's office, so.
That's what I was going to ask.
We will be pursuing those. We have talked and spoken with two senators regarding that particular aspect, and we'll be working in the interim to try to develop a plan for that, with the hope that we try to at least get some indication of whether that funding would come forward before we accept any bid on the police station, should we have issues with being over the proposed budget when the bids come back.
Thank you.
So this may be the first significant project where the tariffs are likely to have an impact on the overall cost.
It's really so hard to predict right now.
Yeah.
But you know, everyone's looking at that particular aspect, partly because it's so unknown.
Yeah.
There's not a lot of steel in it, but there is a lot of aluminum in it. Again, most of the studs will be made of aluminum, and so the building is being gutted and reconfigured from that standpoint, so it all depends on who gets exempted from the tariff and who doesn't, and how that works, and I'm not sure we'll know that before we actually go out to bid even, given the current status of the federal government.
Well, yeah, I think it's important for the public to know that as well, so, I mean, these are the consequences of some decisions made at a, at a higher level, and that, you know, that, that does ripple down, it does, you know, yeah, cascades down to the municipal level, where you don't usually think about it.
One of the other projects we made modifications to, which was the CPS, the former CPSC site, or the Consumer Protection Safety Site off of Darntstown Road, that's on page 514. We've actually, actually added quite a bit of additional funding to this project to kind of bring it in line with what we think is the right solution in terms of the park itself and then the building modification. So we've actually added 1.8 million dollars to that project, mostly from project open space funding, so not from the general fund, but from the allocation that we receive for project open space. In addition, one of the projects that we're actually looking at reconsidering and trying to reevaluate based upon new cost estimates is related to the vehicle baywash at the Public Works, which is on page 555. The original budget for that was roughly 500,000. The new estimates are coming in more at 825, 825,000, and so staff is going to go back and reevaluate whether constructing a facility that can handle all our vehicles, you know, originally the approach was we'd be able to do police vehicles, city vehicles, and trucks, and whether that's still doable, and whether that seems to be a good cost benefit analysis, or if we should reduce the scope, or look for other alternatives in how we clean our vehicles for the, the long term. So that one may actually disappear, or maybe morphed or modified when the budget comes back to you.
Do we have a sense of what the tipping point is in terms of the change in maintenance, this kind of?
Yeah.
Maintenance and the cost of replacing those vehicles if they don't last as long?
I think we're trying to wash now. We would probably end up having to create a wash bay for the larger vehicles that we could do, because currently we wash those in the yard, and that's really not something we can continue to do under our industrial permit. So we're going to have to look at all those issues that come together, so I don't have a good analysis at this point, but when we bring the budget back, I may actually send you a separate email saying here's what we decided to do regarding that particular project. And then the final project I wanted to bring to your attention is the water park slide replacement, which is on page 564 of the packet. We've actually increased that budget by 400,000, partially to try and be in line with what's currently at the park in terms of height of the slide. It's a little bit of a specialty project. We could build the slide for cheaper if we didn't build it as high. There's been some change in terms of what the manufacturers do as a standard height, and we are exceeding that height. What we had originally budgeted was 800,000, and we believed we could do that project, but Park and Rec had requested to try and maintain the existing height and the existing feature for that particular facility, so the project now is at 1.2 million dollars.
We like the height, people are used to having a, a real slide at our park. Not some baby slide, it's a real slide.
It's amazing what 10 feet will actually cost you, because it's not that much in terms of height difference, but.
Yeah, what does a, I guess a shorter slide mean in terms of the, the feature and the excitement?
It can still have the same excitement to some degree, it's just a matter of degree of, you know, how high you're up, so. I'd be happy to reconsider that or look at that if that's the direction of council, but.
I mean, I, I hate to sound unpopular here, but that's an extra 400,000 dollars for an extra 10 feet of height.
It does change things a bit if it's 400 grand for 10 feet.
Yeah. We could bid it as two, it gets hard because this is a design build aspect, so it gets hard for us to say, okay, it's going to, you could have one or two heights. We might be able to work something like that out when we did the bid, and then come back to council with the options. I have to think about that a little bit more of how well that would work under a design bid build project.
This was a topic I'm intent to make.
I'll bet, I'll bet, because I'm not sure, I'm not sure, just because I raised the question doesn't mean I necessarily would want to go with the shorter slide, but I mean it's something to.
It might surprise you that I, I came down on the side of the more expensive slide.
Okay.
It's just the marquee attraction for the park, it's, it's marketable.
Yeah.
It would be the tallest slide, I believe, in the county, but there was even some concern that it would make the park somehow too popular, because it's already pretty crowded now, but you know, since the residents of Gainsbourg are funding this, with my, we came down, you know, that they should get the, kind of the biggest, baddest slide that there is, but it is a lot of money.
Well, and we are, we are building other parks and maintaining other parks too, so you know, 400,000 is a significant dent.
Yeah.
And all of that, so I understand. I, I guess I'd like to see the comparisons that you just talked about, that would be the way to look at it. I, I too think it's important to, to have that, that feature that makes it unique, but I'm not sure that the, that the people who come to the, the park come because their, our slide is 10 feet taller than anybody else's. I think they come because of everything else that, that it offers, so, but I could be wrong.
And that's an approximate size difference, so it's just a round number for me to, it's pretty close to that, it's not like 20 feet or 30 feet.
We'll look forward to the analysis, but again, we'd like having the tallest slide.
So we'll try to structure at least that project to where we could maybe look at both scopes. Again, I'll have to look to see if that's feasible, given it's a design build, so. That's really all I had, unless you had additional questions about existing CIP projects. Again, I think we think it's a little bit more transparent than the old CIP in terms of you can actually look for a project, find the project, look at what the, the revenue sources are coming from, and then what they. Look at what the revenue sources are coming from and then what the expenditures are and a little bit better description for the public.
Yeah, the information is very good, very thorough. I wanted to ask about the CPSC project, just in terms of ballpark timeline. I believe the description says construction will be FY nineteen and FY twenty.
I believe it will be late FY nineteen in terms of construction. One of the issues we had and the reason we added additional funding is we actually halted the design process for the building.
Right.
Until we actually formalized the park design, so we could get a better idea of the funding necessary to do the building conversion. And so we're in the process of doing that part now and we're actually looking at all the options related to the building conversion. Because that will have some operational impacts also in terms of staffing and things like that. So that's kind of why we've had a little bit of delay in the process. Again, it's a, I, to put it in perspective. Just the access road is in excess of one million dollars because it's so far into the site.
Right.
And it's not constructed to any standard at this particular point, so I just want to put that in perspective for the public.
Mike?
I, yeah, so one of the things we talked about at the retreat was the the manor house at Board Park and the status of it. Is it, is it in here in the CIP anywhere?
There's no additional.
Or is it under operating?
Yeah, there is no additional CIP funding for that. We have put a little bit more and have been using some of the funds we currently have to stabilize the structure. And also stabilize some of the surrounding structures. Again, I think we would like some time to get some of the larger projects that we currently have in the CIP done. You know, we have two existing parks that are pretty large parks projects that we're currently doing. Both CPSC and Metamune Park. We also have the police station, which is a very large project for us. So we weren't really comfortable adding it in at this particular point in time. We will look at it again next year to see if we can do some study or some other aspects of looking at what is the reuse for the manor house. I think from a holistic standpoint, we would like to look at not just the manor house, but you also have the caretaker's house and you have the associated barn. So I think we would like to treat those as all kind of one package to make a determination of how the city could best utilize those resources. Or if we form some partnerships like we have with hospice or some other people in terms of using those particular facilities. Because again, both of those, you know, the barns really use for storage. The other two facilities are actually currently vacant and have been vacant, at least, you know, the cert, the caretaker's house has been vacant for quite some time.
Right, but if we don't maintain the condition of the buildings as as they are now, our options are going to be limited or much more expensive.
We are keeping the buildings, you know, in terms of enclosure, making sure they're watertight. And then if we see any structural issues that need to be addressed, we are addressing those in the most cost-effective manner. While we work towards creating a plan.
Okay.
So it's not like we're ignoring the structures. We are, you know, we're looking at patching the roof and things like that when we need to. Or shoring up some things as temporary measures.
Well, that was really my question is whether that those kind of, you know, repairs, whether they're temporary or long-term or whether those are part of the CIP or whether we're pulling them out of contingency or operating.
They would be under operating at this point because they're not of a specific large enough town.
More than thirty thousand dollars, okay. Well, I guess it's good to know that, you know, to seal the buildings won't be more than thirty thousand dollars, but, so.
For instance, we have a structural, not really a big structural issue, but one of the beams appears to be sagging in the barn, so we will shore that up from a structural standpoint. Sufficient to make sure it's stabilized and able to use as storage, but we need to look at the long term, what we're gonna do with that particular structure.
Okay, alright.
Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any. Dennis, thank you very much. Again, thank you to all staff for doing all you've done to put something together that really matches what what we were after. Really, everyone did a really great job and we appreciate it. And that said, there is no work session next.
So Meredith, actually, we have covered the stormwater.
Oh, we had stormwater.
Do you have to be somewhere?
Alright.
I will stay up here.
We got another hundred, a hundred and eighty pages.
I almost let you off the hook.
I was a little confused.
Yeah.
Stormwater.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
It's good to see everybody here tonight. The stormwater management fund begins on page four-sixty-eight in your packet for you to follow along. And as you know, the stormwater fund is driven primarily by the city's stormwater permits, including the MS four permit and the industrial permit associated with the Public Works yard. And the fund supports operational expenses, grant programs that we run and capital projects, including both infrastructure maintenance and then those restoration projects that we need to complete as part of the upcoming permit. So the current draft budget includes specific recommendations for fiscal year nineteen, this upcoming fiscal year. And they include continuing with the proposed rate model increase from the adopted rate model for an FY nineteen rate of twenty-nine dollars and sixteen cents. What that means for an average, the median household of twenty-five hundred square feet of impervious surface. That means their annual fee would increase by about fourteen dollars overall for the entire year. So that's up for your consideration.
This was from, the the rate we were at was twenty-two?
It was twenty-six forty, so two years ago it was twenty-two forty-four. We are now at twenty-six forty and we're proposing to go to twenty-nine sixteen. And then in addition to that, we're also looking at continuing with the general fund subsidy of about a million dollars. And then in FY nineteen revising the rate model once the new permit is issued. And then at that time, we can explore some of the issues I know council would like to re-raise such as that million dollar contribution from the general fund. And we'll, we'll go through some of those policy questions at that time. As far as significant changes go, those are on page four-sixty-nine of your packet. And in thirty-three sixty, that's the stormwater operating section of the stormwater fund. And the furnitures, the furniture and fixtures account will decrease by seven thousand nine hundred fifty dollars following completion of furnishing the stormwater division offices, so that will be going down. Under IT non-consultant services, that funding will decrease by thirty-eight thousand eight hundred thirty-eight dollars because we are wrapping up this current phase of the stormwater geodatabase redesign project. And we don't anticipate needing any funding moving forward. Under miscellaneous professional services, the funding will increase by seventy-three thousand dollars and seventy-three thousand five hundred dollars due to a combination of factors under that that line item. But the the main one is that planned rerun of the rate model is increasing our need for consultant services for that. Under contract maintenance services, the funding will increase by fifty-five hundred dollars for things like B and P inspections and inlet and catch basin cleaning. And conference seminar and class registration funding is proposed to increase to fifty, by fifty-six hundred dollars to cover conference registrations for, and trainings for stormwater division staff. And then that final one under thirty-three sixty for furniture and equipment, that line item is going to be removed. It was a carryover from a withdrawn staff request, so it will not appear in the final budget. And then under thirty-three sixty-one, that is the stormwater infrastructure maintenance portion of the stormwater fund. And under contributions, that funding line item will increase by one hundred sixty-five thousand dollars for FY nineteen. And that's not actually new funding. It's unused funding from previous grant cycles that we're just rolling over and will make available to potential applicants under the city's Chesapeake Bay Trust grant program. So with that, we can move on to revenues and expenditures, which begin on page four-seventy-two of your packet. And the revenue is, of course, prepared primarily by the stormwater program fee. And we're looking at revenues of approximately five million dollars this year from the fee. And again, that fee is assessed to all property owners and property types in the city. We're also looking at the general fund contribution of about a million dollars and some additional transfers into the fund to cover things like the city's payment for its own impervious surfaces. Hardships for those who are eligible and then interest income as well. And so our total anticipated revenue for FY nineteen is about six point six million dollars. And then our expenditures are divided into operational capital projects and then TMDL capital projects. So that's the infrastructure maintenance versus the restoration types of projects. And our total anticipated expenditures for this upcoming fiscal year are about three point eight million dollars. So you'll notice that our expenditures are again lower than our revenues, but we're still in that building up a fund balance portion, you know, of the phase. So that we'll have money to construct our projects that are currently in design right now. And then finally, I want to walk you through some of the projects that we have coming up for FY nineteen. In design, we have several stream restoration projects that we expect to finish final design in nineteen. And that includes Gerard Street, Travis Avenue and Watkins Mill Stream Restoration Projects. And then for stormwater retrofits, we are expecting the Victory Farm Stormwater Pond retrofit to go to final design in FY nineteen as well. And then as far as construction goes, we are starting to bring some of those design plans to construction. So we are planning to construct two stream restoration projects in FY nineteen near Great Seneca Highway. There's one by Lakeland's Drive and then one over near the Metamune Campus that will be going into construction here pretty soon. I did want to also bring up the fact that for some of these high-profile stormwater restoration projects, we are going to be kind of rolling out a new outreach pro, outreach process for that, which will involve the mayor and council. So three of the projects you can expect to have a spring before you this upcoming year are the Victory Farm Large Pond retrofit. Solitaire Court, where we're proposing a new facility. And then also the Brighton Weir, which is located in Malcolm Keane Park, where we may be potentially installing some sort of a pond facility. Again, based on community feedback and council guidance as well. So the way we envision this working is that we will introduce the projects to council, announce a community meeting date, host that meeting. Get feedback from the community that we will then incorporate into the design plans and then bring it back for a work session for for guidance for council. And then, of course, playing it by ear based on project specifics. So we will be seeing a lot of you this upcoming year. And then one new project that we have on the books for FY nineteen is a drainage improvement project behind Woodland Road. This is, has been a resident concern for a number of years. We're going to actually enlarge the conveyance system between those homes to deal with the flooding that comes off the CSX railroad. Yeah.
So I just want to make sure, and I know we've had this discussion here before, that everything, all of this stuff we're doing is going to count.
Yes.
To toward our permit. I don't want to spend several million dollars and then and then they're like, well, no, we're measuring from today.
Of course. There is written guidance now that anything that has been implemented since two thousand six can be claimed towards our permit goals. So we're gonna go back and look at projects that we've done, but we're now fully confident that we can move forward with constructing these projects that we've sort of been just building up our design documents.
Is that state guidance or federal?
State guidance, yep.
Which is, is it?
From.
Is it consonant with federal guidance? Because I know there was a lack of confidence on certain aspects of the permit.
Gotcha. That one, yeah, there's no, no question on that.
Alright.
I have a few questions. Any, any update on when we think we're gonna get the new permit?
So I got an email this morning. It was supposed to be out March thirtieth. Now it's supposed to be this Friday, April twenty-seventh.
This Friday?
Well, this Friday is about as imminent as it's ever been.
That's pretty imminent, considering it's been pushed for years.
It was also imminent on March thirtieth when I thought we were going to get it.
Yeah.
But this came from the person at MDE who wrote, wrote the permit and is kind of the permit coordinator from Maryland Department of the Environment.
Okeydoke.
I remember it seeming im- imminent in twenty fifteen.
Yes, that's right, yeah, yeah.
It was imminent in twenty, two thousand eight was when it expired.
Exactly. A couple other questions, you know, and don't, don't feel the need to opine on this, but I, I just wanted to ask you if if staff had any take on the county budget issues with respect to stormwater. It was a little bit of a headline in the county that the county executive's budget significantly cut funding for stormwater projects. And I don't know, you know, if that was just an instance of kicking the can down the road or if there was some sort of legal basis to be able to say we don't actually have to spend as much as we're, we thought we did.
I'm gonna let Dennis, I'm gonna take a, take a crack at it first. I don't, I don't know if you are referring to the county's plan to privatize some of their restoration projects. I think that's probably what you're talking about. Montgomery County during their first permit cycle was unable to meet their restoration goals. And so I think there were conversations between them, MDE and EPA about how best to move forward. And it sounds like the county themselves made, made the decision to potentially privatize a portion of their program. The impacts to us, I don't see us necessarily following the same route that they did because based on the plan that we have laid out in the CIP from now till twenty-twenty-five, which is when these improvements need to be in the ground. You know, we are very well planned out that we will have the credits that we need to fulfill this permit term pending some very large projects. But we have a good plan laid out. I will now hand it to Dennis.
We actually met with representatives of the county, so I asked them some specific questions about that. They are actually under decree to actually meet the requirements. So they're looking at going back and actually reassessing the credits that they should have gotten. I believe they think one of the issues that they have not looked at very well would be new redevelopment projects that have happened in the county that weren't necessarily county projects, but should be eligible for credits. So they're going back and reevaluating all those. And as Meredith pointed out, that I don't know what their timeline is in terms of how far back they can go. Because their permit schedule is a little bit different, but even in our case, it's a significant, significant number of years that you can go back and retroactively apply credits.
Yeah.
I believe they've indicated they weren't doing that for redevelopment projects within the county. So they think they're going to get quite a few credits regarding that and believe they will be on target, target to meet their mandate. The previous permit mandate under the decree.
Okay, and you said we can look back to two thousand six.
Two thousand six.
We haven't yet done that inventory, have we?
We have a, we, we do have kind of a base inventory, but we're gonna do, you know, once the permit's finally out, you know, we're doing our background right now. But we'll do kind of a final, last, best effort involving multiple departments to make sure we pull in all of the projects that could potentially apply to us.
Which would potentially include, based on what Dennis just said, private land as well, right?
Yeah, so any redevelopment projects that we've had since that date actually count towards our goal of the permit.
Both new development that's happened under, yeah, new development gets full credit, but then under the state manual and the city's stormwater ordinance. Anything redevelopment can claim fifty percent credit for it.
Right, well, so that's kind of, Mike is kind of jumping to the, to the, to the conclusion that I was getting at, which is that it's possible we'll have a very significant increase in what we can claim credit for after we do this full inventory, right?
It's a little bit complicated because it all goes back to our baseline impervious year, which they, which MDE still hasn't completely said when that will be. But most likely, I know.
So we don't know what our baseline is, but we know we can count back to two thousand six.
Two thousand two is what it sounds like the impervious baseline is going to be. So a lot of that new development that's been added later, it gets credit, but it's, you know, it gets credit because it's providing its own stormwater. But we're really concerned about those areas that never had stormwater installed in the first place.
Got it.
For the most part.
Well, practically every, well, practically every development from Lakeland's up till now was built in that timeframe.
Yeah.
So that's pretty significant.
It is.
Did you, wait, did you have one?
Just one more, if you don't mind. I note that at the end of our seven-year projection for the budget. We project to have a fund balance after we have, hopefully, complied with our target of nineteen million plus. a fund balance after we have, hopefully, complied with our target of 19 million plus. So, that's a pretty significant leftover amount in the bank. And I understand the idea is that this, this effort doesn't suddenly cease after seven years. We have to continue to do it out into the future indefinitely, presumably. And the idea there is to have that balance to be able to use it going forward. Have we done any sort of analysis about whether that's too much, whether that's sort of right what we want to have, once we're at the end of the seven-year process that we're focusing on right now?
Sure, sure. So, this is something that we're going to take a look at with, with our consultant when we go back through the rate model exercise again. Because, you know, right now, we are in year four of that five-year rate model that we adopted. And so, you know, next year, FY 20 will be that fifth year. All the numbers that are, you know, from FY 21 out are just kind of carryover. And so, right now, they're not necessarily sized to what we're looking at, but we anticipate when we really take a look at this program with what our specific permit is, really digging into some of those issues.
Okay. Because I mean, I think we all believe in this cause, not only that we have to do it because it's a mandate, but we understand the long-term benefits environmentally and in terms of sustainability. But at the same time, we want to balance, you know, how much we're doing and how much money we're putting aside with, you know, other priorities we have and, you know, the taxpayers' dollar and, you know, making sure that we're not kind of ending up with too much money sitting in the bank at the end of seven years. But I understand, this, we're talking about tens of millions of dollars worth of projects that need to happen. So, we do need to invest in that, but we just sort of need to be careful about how we're budgeting in the out-years and trying to figure out what makes the most sense in terms of the cost and the benefit.
Absolutely. And that is a concern of ours. We don't want to be taking in people's money when we're not using it. That's just not a good business practice. So, we'll be sure to keep that in mind.
I would also say that some of the project costs haven't been quite determined yet on some of the larger projects that we're doing. So, I wouldn't anticipate the fund balance to be that high. Because even though the model goes outside ours, we only show a five-year CIP. So, some of that funding will be expended in seven, in the sixth and seventh year.
Right.
So, as Meredith said, we will refine those as we go through the next rate model. I also want to point out for some of the projects that we have on slate, these are really important projects for us to meet our mandate, and will be difficult discussions with the public. So, I want to be very upfront with the Council that there will need to be a lot of support if we're actually going to meet our requirements under the current projects that we have slated. So, for instance, Victory Farm is a very large project. It involves increasing the pond size significantly.
And establishing a larger wet pool that doesn't currently exist.
And so, you know, we've had some experience with some of the outreach on a recent project. So, I just want to make sure that Council knows these are going to be difficult public processes. But it's important for the public to understand that if we don't really achieve these goals, these are really some low-hanging fruit from our standpoint in terms of the cost-benefit analysis. These are projects that give us the biggest bang for our buck. And if we're not able to accomplish those, additional projects would not give us the biggest bang for our buck. They will be more expensive as we go forward. So, we are hoping the public understands the need to do these projects. And we are looking at ways to make them more amenities. And we'll probably come back to the Council with some proposals about how do we do that, especially on Victory Farm, where increasing the, the size of the facility and also the size of really the wetlands area. Can we incorporate trails? Can we incorporate other features? We don't necessarily feel comfortable paying for those aspects through the stormwater fund, but looking to the CIP to install some of those features as part of an overall project. But it's really critical that we get across the point that if we don't, in particular, Victory Farm is what percentage of the credits?
Brighton Weir is even larger.
Right.
And that, yeah.
We, we have some, you know, we only have a small number of projects, but they're large credit amounts. And so, I, I just want to be clear to the public that it's going to take a lot of cooperation to make these projects happen, and we will do our best to make them amenities as much as we can, but we really need them to occur. I know we've gotten some public feedback on some of the other recent projects we've done, so I just want to make sure everybody's on the same playing table.
I think we have to balance the, you know, the, how our citizens use, how our residents use public space now that's available. If it's an active park, it's really hard to make a case for taking that offline to build a stormwater facility with a fence around it in a prominent location, which is basically the kind of model that was proposed for the Solitaire Court project. And I think, you know, that really needed to go back to the drawing board.
Definitely.
And so, I was, my question about, you know, now that I know the location of the Victory Farm project, I'm less worried about the impact of building a new school in Kelly Park on that particular project. So, certainly, this one can proceed, but the, the impact of, of a, of a, you know, potentially of a school being built at that park is going to have other stormwater impacts that we're going to have to, that, that apparently the city's going to have to take care of as well as the county. So, but I think the other thing about the projection, we're talking about $19 million in the fund in a, in a few years. When I delivered testimony on behalf of the city and the National League of Cities to Congress to a congressional committee, I asked staff to calculate what our costs would be to get us up to the 20% target of mitigation. And over that period of time, we were looking at costs exceeding $40 million for all the projects that were online. So, 19 million is, you know, less than half of what it would take to bring us up to meeting those, those mandated targets under the, you know, the previous permit or whatever we thought the permit was going to be. So, you know, we, we're going to have to continue to invest in this because the costs aren't going to go down. These things are going to get more expensive, and we're going to have other issues to take care of. But, but yeah, look, I think we're all prepared to, to make a case to the public about the necessity to do these things. But on the other hand, we, we can't take other amenities away from our residents in order to comply with this, and we're going to have to figure out how to balance that. And sometimes, it's just going to be a more costly project or more costly design, and we have to think about other innovative ways to do that so that we can maintain those spaces.
Wait, hold on, I want to go to Neil first.
Thanks.
Go ahead, Neil.
No, I just think that the idea of, of combining these stormwater mediation projects with new amenities is the right way to go. And also, not waiting until we spring this on people would be the right approach. In other words, let's, let's think about putting working groups together with the, with the citizens of that area and bring them into the loop to find out what kind of amenities might work best for them and really do a consumer, you know, a CPSC-style organization in order to keep everyone on the same page and get the buy-in from the local community, I think, is the only way to go without, you know, we don't want an us versus them or us versus, us and the EPA versus them, right? We want, you know, we want to know what kind of amenities people are looking for. Maybe a big water slide.
That's stormwater management, right? If the water comes inside. I just wanted to point out, you know, I appreciate what Mike said, but I just, just for clarification, the way I read the budget is that total expenditures after seven years will be more than $40 million. It's the balance left over that will also be an additional $19 million. So, we will, assuming that we follow something along the lines of this budget, we will spend $41 million by the time of the seventh year. Right?
That's the plan.
Yeah.
So, we'll have spent $40 million and we'll still have almost $20 million left over?
Right.
So, we'll have collected $60 million?
Yep.
Yes.
That's what we're looking at.
That's what I'm getting at. That's, that was the point I was making earlier.
Based on something like approximately $5 million a year average during this time period?
I don't, yeah.
How does that work?
It's over $5 million. So, it's, because, well, we have the rate increases.
Yeah.
And part of it was also that this was originally supposed to be a five-year period and suddenly got spread out into a seven-year period.
And now it's spread out. So, we have additional years in here that were not, yeah.
No, I understand, but it was only a couple of extra years, right? It wasn't like 10 extra years.
Like four extra years, yes, correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
And that was the point I was making earlier, that we will have this $19 million left at the, again, assuming, you know, that we follow closely with the budget.
I wouldn't get too wedded to, to the projections.
Yeah, they'll change. They'll change.
Yeah.
The bigger picture was, we'll have a bunch of money left over, we'll spend a whole bunch of money, we might have a bunch of money left over.
We might not.
We might not, but we should just.
We'll have money to start the next phase.
We should look at it, we should think about it, we should think about if it's the right amount.
We're going to reevaluate it completely, generally going to scrap these numbers once we.
Year to year, I think.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we'll get a permit and we'll, yeah.
Yeah. It's kind of like that, that other chart that you love that always shows that we won't have any money in three years.
Meredith, I, I believe that her numbers are perfectly accurate.
And again, and again, I, I understand the idea of having.
You go back through and look.
I, I understand the idea of having a big balance is necessary to roll into whatever the next phase is after the seven years ends. But I just want us to keep that in mind as we move forward with our, our multi-year budget.
As Dennis thinks, didn't you hear me before about my cautionary?
Also, you know, we have had three years where our expenditures have been fairly low because we haven't implemented projects, because we haven't done a permit.
Yep.
In future permit cycles, we will not have that three-year cushion because the permit cycle will be a five-year cycle.
We think.
Unless things change.
We assume, right? We thought this was going to be a five-year cycle and it turned out to be a seven-year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that's what we're hoping we'll turn into. So, you know, some of that funding is just start money to make sure we can reach the next five-year cycle, which will be a more expensive cycle to meet because we're trying to really do the projects that we think are most cost-beneficial at this particular point.
It may be.
I get it, I get it. I'm just, I'm just pointing that out for consideration.
Rob?
So, in looking back at 2006, if it turns out that we, we exceed the requirements, can, can we sell those credits to the county to, for them to meet their requirements?
That's possible. So, one of the things that I.
What's that?
Possibly. One of the things that's delayed the issuance of this permit is MDE is trying to get their trade marketplace set up for nutrient trading between the different permitted entities. So, you know, what that ends up looking like, we don't know yet. That's, there's so many unknowns built into this, including, you know, how much credits will be if we are able to purchase them from potentially agricultural areas. So, you know, yes, the answer is, yes, potentially, we could sell them to Montgomery County, but more likely, we would want to bank them for ourselves and hold on to them for the next permit cycle.
It's unlikely, even though going back to 2006, I think we've done a pretty good study to say we will not exceed our requirement. Otherwise, we wouldn't be moving forward with some of the projects we're doing.
So, could we build some stormwater management projects on the Panhandle where it's cheaper and, you know, use those credits?
In theory, under the.
Potentially. It depends on what the state's program actually is because, you know, the nutrients and nutrients aren't the same across watersheds. So, we don't, we don't know what it's going to look like, but, yeah.
That's one of those post-10 p.m. suggestions.
Well, they're looking at our solar field out there, too. Put it on top of them.
Okay, all right. Do you, you have any more real questions? Is there anybody, any other staff that's expecting to present to us?
I doubt it will get any to.
Okay. All right. Well, then, I will, again, thank everybody and congratulate everybody for doing such a really good job. And note that we have no work session on Monday, April 30th. The next regular session, Mayor and Council, is Monday, May 7th, 7:30 p.m. right here. If, I don't know if there's any registration, if there's room left at State of the City, but we have our State of the City event coming up on Thursday. And if you're interested, contact, I guess, Britta, your office?
Your public information.
Public Information Office and RSVP and show up, and we'll be glad to see you on Thursday. And again, save the date for the book festival and for La Mía de Mayo. All of this is coming up, it's a busy time. Until next time, let's do great things Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.